Grab a water out of there. Grab one of the sacred waters up.
Did I tell you about that one time?
Hmm.
Time lock.
I hear some water. I put some water in the plant. There's some water. All of those waters on the plant. There's here. Click.
This didn't like that.
Didn't get it. I just help myself when we have meetings.
Huh?
I help myself when we have meetings.
I just did. Italian sparkling water. Okay.
I hear Rose. Hi, Rose.
Hello.
Miss Rose is hiding in her little corner by the back door.
Yeah. That's always.
My favorite hole.
The only email I've gotten so far was one from Art.
I'm here. Good. Just got it because I was at the river today.
Oh. What were you doing at the river?
They're doing a lot of, um, they're planting fifty acres of vineyards and they had a new order. So I, today was just a day of after everybody's digging and stuff to fixing broken pipes and drip hose and cleanup.
Yeah.
Blow up, right?
Of course, you try to coordinate and it's like, we didn't know. It's like, we could have told you if there's lines here, if you let us know. They only worry about electricity because then they're really liable.
Yeah. Not to mention people die when you hit electricity, you know?
Exactly. Yeah, those deep rippers and, you know. Oh, you'll fix it. Oh, yeah, not a problem. Well, I always wanted to dig, be muddy and yucky today.
Hi Andrea.
Hi. Don't mind me. I'm eating my dinner, so.
Did you bring enough for everyone?
Would you bring us?
If I could, um, put it through my pizza, through the, uh, screen.
Yum, yum. Pizza.
Uh, barbecue chicken pizza.
Healthy dinner. I'm gonna go see if the baby's up and see if she wants to come say hi. We'll see.
Oh. Please do.
That would be a negative. She is passed out.
Aw, darn it.
She refused her nap today, so she's taking a very late nap.
And hopefully she'll sleep thirteen hours for you.
Yeah, well, see, that's the, that's the problem is if she goes to bed at five, which she did tonight. Well, she took her nap at like four forty-five, then I'm up at three thirty because she sleeps eleven hours and she thinks that she's done sleeping for the night, so.
There you go.
So we.
She is done sleeping.
So we, uh, I just told Neil, I said, I'm going into my meeting. Do not let her sleep past six o'clock. She's gotta be up for like an hour and a half at least.
Run around the house, do some speed skating.
Yep.
Something.
Believe she's over a year now.
I know.
Gonna let in Dave King. If I can find.
Oh, if you have to.
The right mouse. I could wait. No word from Linda yet. Oh, I hear. There she is. Be right back. Okay, Ed is here. Let Ed in. Okay, so I Googled how to.
Oh, Claire?
Yes.
It's Ed.
Hi, Ed.
How you doing, Ed?
I'm fine. Is that Scott?
Hey, Ed, how are you?
Hello, Art. I'm good.
Good.
Think I'm ready.
There you go.
Got a big screen here on a small table.
You're ahead of the game.
There she is.
Going for my keyboard again, so I have to back up.
Oh. What letter did she eat this week?
Oh, so later on, so she ate, she tried to eat the G before the council meeting. Then I brought her back here another time, like the next day, and she managed to pull the control key out of the key.
She's out of control. That's bad.
She's smarter than you think, I think, Andrea.
I think so. But she loves Zoom or any video stuff, so she just stares.
Oh, really?
Say hi. I just woke up from my nap, but.
Yeah. Well, the hair's coming in good. That's a good sign.
It is.
Yeah. When you're.
I wanna talk about that.
She was definitely, um, she definitely did not have very much when she was born, so she's slowly but surely growing it.
I'm in the reverse mode. I just got my, I got my book across the, hi Chanel. Gotta. Kind of rearranged my, which way I'm facing here. Only had one subpoena today, so we're doing good. Only one? Only one. More to follow, they said. Uh-oh.
A reminder.
Hi, Dave.
Hey, Ed.
Hey, Dave, how are you?
Okay.
Good.
I, um.
Think. I've gotta get a pin, another pin.
She sticks.
Hey, hey, sweetie. Let's see. I've got, it's on the other side. Let's see. I need to get.
One for the keys again.
You need to stay awake. For a little while.
I'm gonna put her, um, next to all of her favorite toys that all make noise so that she, uh.
Yeah. Plenty of stimulation there.
Yes. Oh, now she's going for my pizza.
She understands more than you think.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. She wants everything that I have, so, you know, you know, knife cutting something or, you know, pizza.
Thought I've gotta run a little errand. I'll be back in about five.
Alrighty.
Okay. Say bye, Leah.
Ollie.
Hi, Leah.
Is Eric the host right now?
Hi.
I see on my Zoom.
Okay, so you don't see the box with the participants?
No.
So I can hit full screen so that when I can. Ollie and John?
Hey, Dave.
Hello. Hello, Holly.
Hey, Dave.
Trying to find out where that. Hello, Holly.
Hey, Dave.
Trying to find out where that.
Unpacking.
Hello, Holly.
Hey, Dave.
Trying to find out where that.
On this one?
The loose packet.
This one?
Can I have? Yeah, I have it on the computer, but I can't remember where I put it.
Hi, it's also on the website, too. And I can.
I got a hard copy.
Hello.
There's green.
Not all of us are, not all of us are the mayor.
Well, not all of us are as pushy as the mayor.
She's the only one who requested a physical copy.
Uh, our chairman for the planning commission also requested one. So did Ed.
Now, is Patty still the chair?
Yes, she is.
Okay.
Patty is still the chair and, um, Bob Lockdike is the vice chair.
Cool. Okay. I'm gonna run. I'll be, I'll be right back.
Just checking my audio. Am I in?
You are.
I can hear ya.
Ah, blah, blah, blah. Um, okay, so I'm on Planning's, um, website.
It's gonna be under the general plan, land use and circulation element update.
Oh, there it is.
And then background info.
Huh? Oh, there I see it. Got it.
Should be the first one under.
Gotcha. Is it baseline conditions report?
That's the one.
That's the one.
I know I saw it somewhere else. I read it somewhere else, but I can't, I can't seem to find where the heck I put it. All right, I got it. Oh, hi, Art.
How are you?
Yeah, I was, I was busy trying to figure something out. Sorry, I'm good.
Good.
Hi, Art.
Hey, Mr. John, how are you?
Good. Nice to see you.
Good to see you guys.
Now, what do you see?
I see your screen share.
The screen, the, the. The flag.
That shows the flag.
Yeah.
Hmm.
The PowerPoints.
Okay, that's not supposed to just be the flag.
Okay, we can click on it.
So I think, Claire, I think usually like a little window opens up with the screen share and it's like a certain option where you can select to like only show whatever's in your window as opposed to your entire screen. But I don't, I forget what it's called. Keynote or I don't know.
I'm on the, um, ticket in the program. I have a Irma Thompson program tonight. Does that have the agenda and all that?
Yes, that's the agenda for tonight.
There's a program that was sent, um, right around five o'clock today, John.
Yeah.
With the Zoom invite, and then the program is attached to that as well.
Okay. I'm on, um, yeah.
So Claire, you're gonna go off of this one that your baseline conditions report, the loose, right?
Is that correct?
Uh-oh. Did I have some instructions?
Claire, did we have any public comments? There's a part where we, we read public comments. I haven't seen any.
No, we haven't gotten any public comment as yet. I have my email open right now and still.
Comment. So do we tell people who are watching this, if any of the public is watching it, that they can email you at claireb?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, or planning@cityofbuilton.com. Either one comes to me.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, Dave, did you ask me a question earlier?
You, you're basically gonna go off of your report from the Planning's website, correct?
Correct. That is the draft baseline report.
Gotcha. Okay.
The agenda tonight is the program that was sent earlier tonight, right?
Yes, correct.
Correct, correct.
Sent tonight?
At five o'clock.
Oh, no, no, I have the one that Rose gave me.
Yeah, Irma sent.
I sent it, um, just around five o'clock. It just, it's an overview of just how the meeting is structured this evening.
Yeah, Irma sent one out at four fifty-six and then I sent it again right around five. So either one of those emails.
Is it the, Rose is there? Is it the same one that she gave me when I came in this afternoon?
The one I sent was an earlier draft.
It was an earlier draft.
It's pretty much the same.
They should be pretty close, yeah.
Yeah.
Minor items. I think one says draft on it and the other one doesn't, so.
Right. Okay, so I'm gonna do the introductions, we're all through the roll call. I'll ask our vice mayor to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. I will just really briefly just say we're going, well, the program format, Irma, you can talk about how we're gonna break all this down, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And the only thing I, I need to make clear is that if, if the presentation, while the presentation is going on, if anybody has any questions or comments during the presentation, to just say either Mayor Sierra, Irma, or whoever's talking, and then ask your question, say, this is, uh, Dave King, this is Councilman Andrisik, and then make your comment or, or question so that if there's any people listening to it, that they know who's talking. And is that a good, I, yes, city manager?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I, I think it might be a good idea this evening, given the volume that we're gonna cover. If everyone could, if you have questions, just make a quick note of it and then, and then come back after the presentation is done. That way we can get through the presentation and, and go back and answer questions. Otherwise, it may take half the night just to get through the presentations, so.
Correct. What, what are you doing tonight, Mr. Wolf?
Sitting here at this meeting. That's about the extent of it.
Trying to avoid a fire.
All night, though.
Yeah, I mean, and, and until they open, until they open, uh, all, all the breweries back up, I'm not going too many places.
Hey, Firestone's open.
Yeah, Figs open too, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm lockdown tight here, so.
Hate when that happens.
Yeah, me too.
Are you at home or are you in the office?
Oh, I'm at home.
Okay.
That's why you have wine clubs, is you send your cases of wine.
Yes, please. Gotta get back on that list.
Yes.
Yeah, my wine clubs don't send the cases. I get maybe a couple bottles, but I don't get the cases you do.
Did you need my address, Art?
So Patty, have you got most of your planning commission here?
Um. I do. I think I'm, unless, I work on an iPad, so I don't know if I can see everyone, but I see three of my commissioners.
Good.
I don't.
I don't see Erin.
Erin.
Hey, Patty?
Yes?
Up in the upper left-hand corner, if you tap on the screen, it'll show you like a, like little squares.
Oh, no, I have. I have. Yeah. The, the. I am on, I am on landscape and I know the city's using a new software. I used to, could only see a few people, so.
Now we're getting on the page, huh?
We have Erin, we have Erin with us now. I think we're all here.
They are.
Hi, Erin.
We're still waiting for Mercado, I think.
I'm here.
Oh, there you are. Hey, Art.
Thank.
Oh, you're hiding in the middle of the screen. I'm sorry.
Is Rose, does Rose have a camera or is she the Builton City TV person?
Yes, she's, that's Rose.
Hi, Rose.
Hi, Rose.
We are missing Joel, I think.
So I've got, I've got, uh, six o'clock. Is Rose ready to start rolling on Builton City TV?
I am.
Hold on, I got two more people coming in. Let's see. The mouse doesn't wanna work.
Okay.
This is how our kids are going to school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a good thing they're more tech savvy than we are.
Right.
But ask them if they're learning anything and the stock answer is no.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Need to get them back to school.
A second net.
Okay, here we go.
Linda?
Are we taking a vote on that right now? Go Linda this evening.
Okay.
No, oh, I'll be done.
Joining us now. Okay, on the count of three, we're switching live.
Okay. Alrighty, uh, thank you for coming. I am calling our, uh, general plan, LOSE, which is land use, circulation, element, update workshop number three to order. If I could get Claire to do a roll call, we have both the planning and the city council together tonight.
Okay, we'll start with the city council. Councilmember Andrisik.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Sierra.
Here.
Planning Commission, we have Commissioner Liggett.
Here.
Commissioner Mercado.
Here.
Commissioner Sarkia.
Hello.
Vice Chair Blockdike.
Here.
And Chair Hamel.
Here.
Thank you very much. If I could get, uh, Vice Mayor Sanchez to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Absolutely. Art, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America. Which stands. A nation.
Under God.
Under God. Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Fabulous. Fabulous. Thank you very. Okay, so now I am going to turn this over to Irma Tucker, who is going to go over the program format, meeting protocols, workshop goals, and to introduce the team. Uh, I don't know if Irma's gonna say it or not, but if you have any questions, since this is such a long meeting, if you could make a note of any questions or comments, and at the end of the meeting, when we do the wrap-up, that's the time to go back and ask a question. So I turn it over to Ms. Irma Tucker.
Hey. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council and planning commissioners. Welcome and thank you all for joining us this evening. Um, this evening's meeting is the second joint study session between both bodies. Um, and it's really the third public workshop that the city is conducting regarding the general plan, land use and circulation element update. And we refer to it in short as LOSE, so less of a mouthful. Um, and just as a brief reminder, the circulation element is undergoing a comprehensive update at this point. So this was the main impetus for the update effort. But because land use is such an integral part of circulate, it actually drives circulation in many ways. Um, it felt, we felt that it was appropriate to do an update on the land use element as well. So the update that is undergoing for land use is mainly cleanup. And it's a very focused element. It's not a comprehensive, um, update. Uh, the comprehensive update for the land use element will, um, be occurring when the, uh, the entire general plan, um, will be updated. It's scheduled to happen in twenty twenty-five. So, um, this evening's, um, there we go, thank you. Uh, the, this evening's, uh, program format, um, this is just a summary of what you have before you on the, the program that was sent earlier this evening. But it's, um, basically we will have presentations by city staff as well as our transportation consultants on the topic, topics of land use, social equity and circulation. So we've divided the evening up into several segments. The first segment is going to cover land use and social equity. And at the end of that presentation, um, we will have a policy discussion. And at that point, we will ask for comments from each of the members of the planning commission and the city council. We will take a five-minute break after that and then we'll resume with the circulation presentation, which will be staff as well as our, uh, transportation consultant giving a presentation on VMT, which is vehicle miles traveled. It's a new acronym that we're getting used to. Um, it's a new way of measuring, um, traffic impacts. And again, at the end of the circulation segment, we will have a, a policy discussion involving the planning commission and the city council, and it's at that point that we would ask you to provide your comments and policy direction. So as, as we are going through the presentations, if you could make note of questions that you may have um, so that you can ask them at the appropriate, uh, times. And we'll go back through the slides if we need to, just we felt that because we have, um, ten members of, um, the decision-making bodies present and two segments to do cop, uh, comments on, we felt that would be the most expeditious way to get through the evening. So after we've gone through that, um, we will read into the record any public comments that have been received. And so I understand at the beginning, we have received none. And as of this point, we may receive some during the presentation this evening. Um, and Claire will let us know about that at the end. So I just would briefly like to state that tonight, we have two, two goals for the workshop. One is to inform the city decision-makers on baseline conditions that are present currently that will really form the basis for this, um, land use and circulation element update. And this information that we're presenting as part of the baseline will include an assessment on the programs and policies that have been in place. And we will report on kind of a high level of, of achieve, achievements that, um, we have accomplished during, um, the two thousand seven through twenty twenty-five period. And two thousand seven, two thousand eight, which was the last time that the land use and circulation elements were updated. And the second really important goal tonight, and I'd like to say it's a really, really important goal, we will be asking for input from both the planning commission and the city council. Um, and primarily city council on prime policy direction on several key items that are part of the land use and circulation elements that will then get incorporated into the updates. So with that, I would like to introduce the, um, the team that is here this evening. Um, we have Scott Wolf, the city manager, Rose House, the public works director, Andrea Kiefer, planning director, Karamichi, the assistant planner, Claire Barcelona, our planning technician, and Rincon consultants, um, who are helping us with the, um, preparation of the elements and as well as the, um, preparation of the EIR. Uh, they are in the audience observing because they're gonna take the, the baton from this evening's workshop and then move forward on actually preparing some of the documents, um, along with city staff. And then we also have KR, KOA Crane Transportation Consultants present, Joel Falter, uh, who presented at the last, uh, joint meeting between the city council, planning commission. Joel will also be presenting this evening. And Diana Skidmore is also present from KOA Crane. And I'm Irma Tucker. I'm the city's, um, contract planner. And I will transition over to the, uh, land use, uh, presentation. I have the first segment conveniently. And if I could have the next slide, please. And as I mentioned before, uh, we have conducted an assessment of the policies and programs that were, that are in the current adopted land use element. And in general, progress has been made towards accomplishing the policy direction and many of the programs that were in the, that are in the general plan. We did the kind of assessment, um, highlights of the assessments, which we are presenting to you tonight. Um, many of the programs are ongoing, um, policy. Policies and programs are ongoing that are not going to change, and those will remain as stated in the land use element. But we'd like to just point out some of the major achievements and comment on some that may need some revision or in some cases deletion. The next slide, please. So the overall achievements, now just read them off the list. We've completed master plans for the sewer water and storm drainage systems. We are continuing to implement our community design guidelines for all new developments throughout the city. And we're currently in the process of updating the design guidelines to enhance the agrarian section as well as incorporate elements of art deco and other design requirements from the Avenue of Flags specific plan. We are continuing to collect development in fact, impact fees. We've adopted a mixed-use ordinance that allows, potentially allows for mixed uses in residential multifamily, commercial and industrial zones. We've implemented the AHOS, which stands for the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone. And there have been two projects developed so far under that overlay zone and several more are, are kind of in the pipeline. And we have standard of, standard conditions of approval for new development. And these conditions do include undergrounding of utility. So it's, it's a requirement. It was a policy in the general plan. So they are, that's now a part of our standard conditions of approval. And some of the impacts, the major, I should say, actions that have impacted our land use policies was the creation of the urban growth boundary back in 2007, 2008, when the general plan was, land settlement was last adopted. And since that time, there have been revisions to the village-specific plan. And this next one is a, is a pretty, pretty major action that happened. It was the termination of the redevelopment agency statewide and related funding that the city was receiving. So any of the program references to redevelopment agency revitalization project and the funds that were earmarked for some of the studies and some of the programs, those are no longer in existence. So we will.
We got robbed $6 million. Dollars.
Yeah. So we will be making some adjustments to the policies as, as a result of that. We adopted the Avenue of Flags specific plan, which includes a, a design vision and flexible development standards for our downtown area. And this specific plan, this overall supersedes the, was previously the Avenue of Flags Highway 246 urban design plan. We've adopted a new ADU ordinance. And it's really not just a new ordinance, but it's also a streamlining of the permit process. And this supersedes the secondary dwelling unit ordinance, which was previously in place. And then most recently, we designated our first group of historic sites. So I'll just quickly go through these. So as, for example, partially achieved programs. And I say partially because these all involve redevelopment agency funding. These were such items as development of the Highway 101 corridor plan, property redevelopment programs in the revitalization area, and pursuing the development of the civic center. And by and large, the intent of these programs are being achieved by other means. Probably the biggest of which is the Avenue of Flags specific plan. But community design guidelines are addressing some of the design elements in the Highway 101 corridor. And the Beelton Beautiful rebate program is also helping for revitalization in our downtown area. So that's why it's a partial achievement because we couldn't do everything that the redevelopment project had intended to do. And on the next slide, we have a few more partially achieved programs. Collecting development impact fees. Well, we are doing that. So that is an achievement. However, the program called for the fees to be updated annually, which we haven't done quite as frequently. The traffic, rather sewer water fees haven't updated, but the whole fee structure needs to be updated and implement a regular schedule for doing that. So amending commercial designations, increasing site coverage and heights per the urban design plan. Well, this again is being addressed by the Avenue of Flags specific plan. And the last one on this list is to establish a business license ordinance and fee. A separate ordinance for this has not been established. However, the intent of this program is being achieved via the zoning clearance process where there's a new, new business or change of ownership of the business or change of use. Those parties need to come in for a zoning clearance process. So we, so we do track changes in commercial businesses through that means. And the next slide here are the, just a couple of the programs to, you know, to note that we've not achieved. One of the programs in the land use element was to conduct a sphere of influence study and to identify potential growth and city boundary expansion areas. So this did not occur. It was supplanted by the urban growth boundary, which expires in 2025. So that, a new, a new look and additional discussion will happen on the urban growth boundary along about the same time that the general plan will be updated as well in 2025. And finally, this one, what talks about establishing minimum lot areas in the general commercial zone to promote consolidation of small lots. Well, the Avenue of Flags specific plan allows for flexible lot sizes via the Form-based code and other design standards. So in that area, at least there is not a need for doing to lot consolidation effort. So the, we may want to evaluate the need citywide if it would make sense to have a minimum commercial lot size. So that is a high-level overview of the policies and programs and assessments, specifically bringing us up to the current. And I'll turn it over to Kara at this point, who's going to go through a summary of our baseline conditions as well as our couple of our growth scenarios that will, we will be considering as part of the environmental review process. So Kara.
Thanks Irma. So like Irma said, I'm going to go over some existing conditions in the city as they apply to land use, and you can go to the next slide. So you'll see on the left here is our current land use map from the 2007 land use element. And then on the right is the new land use map resulting from the changes that have taken place since then. So going through those, the Avenue of Flags specific plan, you can see created an overlay zone. And you'll see in the light blue color. The village specific plan has been partially built out. So the underlying land use designations will need to be updated to reflect multifamily on the townhomes and senior apartment sites and the village park as open space parks and recreation. And then along with the whole specific plan area, having that overlay that you see in the dark pink hashes. Then next, the sites that are affordable housing overlay zones sites are now identified in the red hashed areas. And then lastly, just a cleanup item was Oak Park, which was shown in the 2007 land use map as multifamily. So now it's shown here as open space parks and recreation. Can go to the next slide. So during the presentation, we're going to present three growth scenarios. And these are used as alternatives to assess environmental impacts from, for the SEQA EIR for the loose update. So the first and second I'll speak on now, and then Scott later in the circulation presentation will go over the third. So the first alternative for SEQA is always a no development scenario. So for this, we just, we use the current existing development there is in the city now. And at the top of the table here, you see we've got right now 883 multifamily units. And below each of the major categories is a breakdown of the new development that's been built since 2004. And in each of the land use designations. So since 2004, there's been 54 multifamily units built in the multifamilies. Land use designation, 155 in the village specific plan, and then 106 in the AHOS sites. And next, or let's see here, actually. So that's 315 new multifamily units, and this was a 50% increase, which was the largest increase in any of the land use categories. So going down now, single-family homes now total 1,241. And this was 41 new single-family units built since 2004, and that's only a 3% increase. So this included eight, four ADUs, 36 homes from Valley Station, and then just one managers unit from a service commercial project. As for commercial, there was a 10% increase in new square footage. And then development within the commercial, general commercial zone made up about a third of this. Service commercial made up about half. And that's likely due to generally larger projects like warehouses in that zone. And then 15% of it was due to the Crossroads Commercial Center. And lastly, industrial development saw a 6% increase, mostly from the build-out of industrial way. And I have made a note here that we found interestingly, 6,400 square feet of industrial warehouse space was converted to commercial uses like tasting rooms or restaurant space. So overall, development since the last update has actually seen a major reduction in the development that was expected in 2007. And of course, this is in large part due to the economic recessions 2008 and now. And you can go to the next slide. So before I continue on to the next growth scenario, I wanted to just briefly go over some of the local and state legislation that's been passed since the last update that have had and will continue to have an impact on development trends in our next scenario too. So the first Irma mentioned them, mixed-use ordinance, which will allow a combination of multifamily, commercial, industrial, and all of those zones. And this can be seen, for example, in the wine tasting uses on industrial way. Next, the Avenue of Flags specific plan established a whole new build-out potential for this area with denser commercial and multifamily buildings. And then last year, of course, we adopted the ADU or accessory dwelling unit ordinance, which is intended to encourage ADU development. And this seems to be proving successful as we've already seen four ADUs go through the permitting process just in the last year, which is just as much as was built in the past 15 years combined. So the next five historic landmarks were designated, and that might affect land use development in the future for those sites. And then finally, the state density bonus law was updated again this year. And it's been met with more developers requesting additional density for affordable housing projects. Yeah, you can go to the next slide. So our second scenario here are build-out existing conditions or baseline build-out, or sorry, baseline scenario numbers from scenario one, and then a potential build-out of development in the next 10 years. So that's at year 2030. An important note here before I go through the table is that there is a significant difference in this tenure build-out and the general plan EIR 2025 build-out. And that's mostly in a reduction of potential for multifamily units and industrial square footage. And this due to a number of reasons. So the numbers you see here are working numbers, and they might be changed a bit with the drafting of the EIR. But I'll go through this scenario now. So we did an assessment that looked at build-out potential of all the vacant parcels, the existing redevelopment potential, reasonable ADU development, and the tenure build-out of the Avenue of Flags specific plan area. And as you can see on the table, with this scenario, we'd have 70, 742 new multifamily units, which would be an 84% increase. And that mostly would come from specific plan and AHOS areas. And then next, single-family development is mostly expected to be from ADUs, totaling just 5% increase from the existing development we have now. So 57 more. And then next, commercial square footage is projected to increase slightly from what we've seen over the past 15 years. 12% increase. And then industrial square footage is expected to increase by 20% in this scenario. So I will turn it back to Irma to talk about social equity findings.
Myself. All right, thank you, Kara. So the, the concept of social equity pertains to the idea that equal access to opportunities and quality of life should be available to all communities regardless of income, race, location, or other factors. Recent state, state legislation, including SB 1000, has emphasized the role of environmental and social justice in urban planning. So that's why we are talking about it as part of our general plan. Because SB 1000 requires that local general plans address environmental justice and social equity. And this law requires, among other things, that local governments identify potential disadvantaged communities or DAX as we refer to it in short. So to identify DAX in our jurisdictions using formal state guidelines established for this or possibly, if applicable, alternate methods that may be more suited to local conditions. So in Beelton, we have found that Beelton really does not have any formally identified DAX according to the state guidelines. But in an effort to address conditions in our community, we have used local metrics to determine if there are any disproportionate social, economic, or environmental burdens that may potentially impact certain segments of our population. And we found that the factors that are most applicable to Beelton are linguistic isolation. For example, this would be a family who does not understand notices that are provided by the city on various programs because they do not have as good of a command of the English language. Demographic needs such as age. And this actually was an item that was a comment in one of our prior workshops. It was a community workshop where a community member commented that we need to look at our population and as it ages, what the needs are of a more aging population to be able to access certain things such as parks and recreation, which is one of the items on this bullet list. And the other factor is just overall mobility and access, community-wide and mobility access to be able to you know, have access to transportation options. So given these, basically these four factors that we thought were the most appropriate to address in Beelton, we, we came up with some recommendations that we will be considering as part of both the land use and circulation elements as applicable. So these will be interspersed within the two elements where appropriate. So the policy recommendations for social equity would be to, to, if you could go to the next slide, please. So it would be to promote meaningful engagement in the planning and decision-making process for all demographic and socio-economic segments. Access to alternative transportation to be available community-wide, including to residents who may be constrained by age, income, mobility, or linguistic factors. And on the next slide, continue to. And on the next slide, um, continue to improve active transportation infrastructures such as pedestrian and bike paths. Review opportunities to designate additional park la- additional land, sorry, for park use, especially areas that are currently lacking park space within easy walking distance. And promote greater access to fresh foods for all demographic segments. And this would include, um, actions such as identifying locations for farmers markets, and potentially for community gardens as well. So those are the findings and recommendations that we will be working with in the land use and circulation update. And with that, I will, um, turn it over to Andrea to continue with, um, our land use element portion.
Great, thanks Irma. Um, so you've heard sort of the baseline conditions and an assessment of the existing policies and programs for the land use element. So the next piece would be, you know, where do we go from here as it relates to this focused land use element update? So, um, in my presentation, I will be providing a summary of findings and policy recommendations pertaining to land use. Um, and throughout my presentation, I will be looking for specific input, which will be summarized at the end of my presentation, uh, for both planning commission and city council member comments. So the first, so this update, um, would, it really consists of revisions to the land use element policies and programs uh, for consistency, one, for consistency with the Avenue of Flag specific plan, which Irma touched on in her presentation. As she referenced, there are quite a few references to the Avenue of Flags, um, urban design plan or revitalization plan, um, as well as the redevelopment agency. Um, and so references to both of those plans will be removed and, um, the, um, or policies and programs that are, um, consistent with the Avenue of Flags specific plan, they will be modified as such to make sure that they are um, consistent with that new plan. Um, again, tonight, we're also specifically requesting policy direction on three of the existing land use policies, um, which we will go over as part of my presentation tonight. Um, cleanup updates to the land use map and zoning ordinance reflect changes that have occurred since the last update. Um, I know, um, Cara covered, um, that in detail, um, and I will just summarize that at the end of my, um, my presentation tonight. In addition to the land use map, land use map changes, there may also be some changes to the zoning code, um, that will follow the, um, updates to the policies and programs in the land use element to ensure consistency between the two. Um, so we'll go over some of those as well. And just as a fourth bullet point here, um, just a reminder that, um, again, this is a focused land use element update um, that will ultimately, uh, need to be consistent with the comprehensive circulation element update that is, um, being conducted concurrently. So just briefly, I listed, um, looking at revisions to the land use element policies, um, for consistency with the Avenue of Flag specific plan. So I've pulled a few from the land used element, um, for this presentation, however, it may, this list may not include all of the existing policies that need to be updated, uh, for this purpose. Um, so just to go through quickly, uh, current land use element policy, um, L eight relates to the desire to seek public-private partnerships that were to be funded by the redevelopment agency for improvements along the Avenue of Flags. So as Irma mentioned, these funds are no longer available. Um, however, this policy should be revised to reflect the city's ongoing desire to seek such partnerships within the scope of the Avenue of Flag specific plan. Uh, current land use element policy L nine, uh, this relates to the community design guidelines. So this policy was achieved, um, as Irma mentioned, in the two thousand and five community design guidelines update. However, as you are aware, uh, we are currently undergoing the twenty twenty-one community design guidelines update, which includes incorporating art deco design into the uh, standards for the Avenue of Flags specific plan. And then just to list a couple more policies, L twenty, thirty, and thirty-two, um, the text of these policies should uh, be revised to reference the Avenue of Flags specific plan as opposed to the revitalization plan or the um, Highway two forty-six slash Avenue of Flags urban design plan. So moving on to current, the current land use element policies that staff is looking for specific feedback and direction on tonight. Um, I'll just start with policy L six here. So current, um, land use element policy L six relates to development impact fees, um, which Irma also touched on in her presentation, um, and fiscal impact assessments for development projects. So as Irma mentioned, um, the city has developed and adopted development impact fees for development projects. However, these fees have not all been regularly updated, and, um, because they have not been regularly updated, they may not reflect consistency with the current city service costs. Uh, therefore, staff is looking for policy direction regarding whether or not to revise this policy to update the city's development impact fee studies schedule and adjust its fees as needed, um, to ensure city service costs are up to date. Um, further, staff is looking for policy direction on whether or not this policy should be further modified, um, so that future major development projects um, should be required, required themselves to prepare an impact analysis, be that, uh, fiscal impacts, public impacts of public services, impacts to infrastructure, um, as applicable to their particular project, to ensure that the proposed development pays its fair share of mitigating, um, for identified impacts. So just to really quickly recap, um, basically, we're asking, uh, the Planning Commission and City Council tonight if they think we should revise this policy, um, for the reasons, um, just just stated.
Excuse me, Andrea, um, are you advancing the, um, slides that are on the screen?
For some reason, it wasn't, oh, sorry about that. Um, there we go. Um, so, sorry, this, um, just to show you policy L six, um, on the screen, we can always come back to it when we, for, when we go for the discussion. Okay, so, policy L ten. So current land use element policy L ten relates to the protection of historically or architecturally significant buildings. Um, as you will recall, late last year, City Council, um, adopted a resolution relating specifically to designating five properties in Bilton as historic. Um, and so, current Bilton municipal code sections pertaining to designation of landmarks pretty well addresses the intent of the adoption of that resolution specifically pertaining to those five sites. However, policy L ten, as currently written, um, may benefit from a revision by adding text similar to what is up on the slide here. To clarify that while the intent is, is to encourage protection of historically and architecturally significant buildings, um, there's also a process per the Bilton municipal code, which must be gone through in the event that there is a proposal made to the city for any modifications to existing buildings that have been, have been designated as historic. So for this one, staff is looking for policy direction on this particular policy, um, on whether or not to revise this policy to reflect the intent of the municipal code. And the city council, as it relates to the five sites and that have been identified and any future sites that are identified in the future. So I will note that this policy could stand, um, as is on its own with no revisions. However, since until recently, no sites um, in Bilton have been, um, designated as historic, staff is bringing this potential revision up as an option. Um, in the event that Planning Commission and City Council would like to see, um, you know, a clear tie to the municipal code to clarify the intent and to make sure that, um, it's covered in the land use element as well. So. All right, moving on to our, the third of the three that we're looking specifically for policy direction on, uh, policy L thirty-six. So, um, this policy, uh, relates to encouraging businesses that cater to the needs of ranching and agricultural operations in the service commercial and industrial zones. So for this one, staff is not necessarily suggesting any change to the current policy. However, we are looking for direction regarding whether or not city council and planning commission feel it's necessary to potentially update the land use permit process and zoning ordinance, which would likely occur as part of a comprehensive zoning code update that would occur in the next few years. Um, for the purpose of clarifying development standards and allowable land uses within the industry. So take, for example, wine tasting or wineries. Uh, the current zoning code does not have a land use category for winery and does not have, say, parking standards specific for wine, wine tasting type uses. So in order to streamline the process, um, and to ensure that land uses with the, within this industry are adequately addressed, the land use permit process maybe needs, may need to be reviewed and updated as needed to clarify those development standards for those, um, land uses within the agricultural support business industry. So these updates here are specifically updates that need to occur with the land use map as well, zoning ordinance to reflect changes since the last update. Um, and there are a few, um, simply some cleanup items in here as well. A lot of, um, these here have been touched on earlier on in the presentation, so I'll go through them quickly. But, um, one of the, um, changes, the first change here on this slide is, um, there are several properties that have been designated recently as having historic significance, and so we felt that it would be important, um, that these properties and any properties, um, in the future that are designated as such, uh, should be reflected in the land use map and zoning ordinance. Um, so in the zoning ordinance with an, uh, dash H L designation, so, um, as to clearly document, um, which sites the designation applies to. AHA site, so, um, you know, Cara, you should, you saw it on the map there, that they, these, um, sites should be clearly shown on the land use and zoning maps. The specific plans that have been adopted since should be also incorporated in the, um, land use map as well. Um, city park designation, so, um, the, the current, all the current city parks currently, um, or should have land use designations as, um, open space parks and recreation. Currently, Oak Park and Village Park are not designated as such as, um, Cara went through. Uh, further, in terms of zoning, um, we've, staff felt that we should rezone Oak Park and River View Park as res- recreation. Currently, um, Oak Park is designated as residential and River View Park is zoned as open space. Um, next bullet point here, um, related a bit to parks, but, um, staff felt that a new and separate zoning district for Zaca Creek Golf Course may, may be needed. Um, currently, Zaca Creek Golf Course is zoned as PRD open space or, um, um, planned residential development open space. So it may be more appropriate for it to have its own zoning designation, um, so it can be distinguished between private commercial recreation and public non-paid, uh, recreation. The next one here, um, there's just, this one would just be a cleanup item. So there was a, um, self-storage facility that was, um, built since the last update and the, uh, zoning was changed. So as part of that, that, uh, project, the zoning was changed from, um, general commercial to service commercial. And the change here is simply that the land use map needs to also reflect that as it was not changed along with the zoning map at that time. And finally, um, this, uh, related to agricultural support businesses, again, just sort of reiterating, you know, should we amend the zoning ordinance to clarify development standards and permit processes um, for the increasingly prevalent land uses related to agricultural support business such as wine tasting, et cetera. So this slide summarizes, um, the policy updates and specifically the policies and proposed updates, updates we are looking for feedback on. So, um, I've just listed them here and we can go back to them if there's any specific comments, questions, or any, anything on here, but, um, so that, um, concludes my portion of the presentation, and I would now like to turn it over to Patty Hamel, uh, Chair Hamel, uh, of the Planning Commission to facilitate the Planning Commission member comments on the land use presentation and policies.
And Chair Hamel, Chair Hamel, this is Mayor Sierra. It looks like we each have three minutes for our comments, give or take.
And is that three minutes per person?
Correct.
Yes.
Yep, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you, Andrea. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm gonna start, uh, with my fellow commissioners. Uh, Commissioner Mercado, do you wanna start off? Do you have questions or comments or?
Uh, no questions, but, uh, comments, um, wanted to thank, uh, planning staff for Andrea and all of her crew to, um, for a nice presentation. Um, I did have one or comment on the ag support businesses, uh, was, I know, um, with as many wineries and just in this little short time, uh, we've had a couple more, uh, come online. It, uh, staff thinking that we do need to, uh, update with wines and wine tasting to, uh, for parking and, uh, at least that way they know going in, uh, what's the minimum, and that way, uh, when it is presented to planning and, uh, they know going in that X amount of spots have to be designated for parking, and that seems to be the biggest logistic problem for that. So I would, uh, like to see the revisions for policy L thirty-six.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Ligon.
Hi, thank, thank you for the presentation. Very nice and thorough. Um, I agree with all the policy, uh, adjustment recommendations that you've made. I don't really have any questions or input on that. I do have a, one question, I suppose, on the social equity. Recommend that you, you, um, had a list of recommendations of what we could do as a city. A couple of them were, uh, access to, more access to transportation and engage, um, more community involvement. Get stakeholders more invested in the community. My question is how, what strategies would you suggest, or do you have any strategies on how to achieve those recommendations? Particularly getting the community involved.
I can, um, take a stab at an answer to that. Um, some of these, these policy items will be getting further fleshed out as we work on the elements. But in terms of promoting meaningful engagement in the decision-making process, um, we, at the city, we are actually redoing a fair amount of outreach, um, to get the community involved, and we do have a, a pretty involved community in the, uh, decision-making process, and we have been reaching out, um, yeah, for projects that impact some of the, um, areas or some of the, uh, local neighborhoods that may have a, a high degree of Hispanic um, speaking, speaking households. We have made, um, notices available and, um, in Spanish as well, and it had translation, um, interpretive services available. So we are already doing, um, a, a lot of this. We just, we don't have a policy that says specifically that we will, we will do this. So, um, and, and developing this further in the, um, for the element, we will look at other opportunities. And I think of going forward after we emerge from COVID, I think some of the more, you know, face-to-face, um, small group sessions, getting out of the community will be things that we'll be looking at. Um, and I think your other question was related to transportation. Um, I know this is something that we're gonna be talking about more in, uh, our, the circulation element, but it's really stating, it's almost stating the obvious, but it's stating that the city really recognizes that we have a wide, um, range of, um, residents in the community that have different needs and different constraints and, and how to make, um, transportation, uh, services available to members of the community. So something we'll be looking at in the circulation element. Um, but this just makes the statement that the city recognizes that this is something that needs to be done.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Sarkia.
Oh, thank you. It was a very informative presentation. I like how you went over a lot of the details on, on things that needed updating and, uh, that's pretty much all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Blockdike. Mute, Vice Chair.
Bobby on mute.
I didn't realize I was on mute. Sorry about that. Hey, I just wanted to, and I'm not gonna waste the three minutes. I just wanted to say thank you to the planning department and, uh, and for a great presentation, and I endorse your recommendations. I don't have much to add, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Um, that leaves me. Um, I will make it quick also. I had a question for Cara on her presentation. Um, on growth scenario one, which of course was the On growth scenario one, which of course was the as-is, no development. And then scenario number two, 10-year build-out. What is that build-out based on? Is it like average building permits over the last 10 years?
Yeah, the baseline scenario is based on building permit information that we have. So they had a baseline in the 2007 land use element and we used that and then built upon it, basically looked up all the building permits that have been issued since, actually it was 2004. Okay. Inventory was done.
Okay, thank you. And then I concur with all of the recommendations from all of the presenters. Just, just quickly on the L6, the impact fees, I do believe we should study that and increase it to whatever, if, if it's like a cost of living increase or, or whatever to to make sure our services are paid for by developers. Landmarks, L10, I agree with that. I think we should revise the, I guess, as the municipal code to reflect our intent on that. I think that's very important for new developers coming into town. For instance, one of the existing historical landmarks that was just designated that is Peasoup Anderson's restaurant property. And of course, that's on the market for sale. So I'm sure any potential new owners, developers will want to know what the intention, what, what they can and cannot do for that. Just going and everything else, you know, yes, I do think we should update all our verbiage and stuff, just so it's consist, so everything's consistent. And that's all for us, for the planning commission.
Thank you very much, Chair Hamel. I will take it to the city council now for their three minutes, give or take. We'll start with Councilmember Lewis. Comments, questions?
No, just taking it all in and learning about.
It's a lot to take in. Okay, thank you. Councilman King?
No, I think it's a great presentation, but I just had a question about one thing. Is there currently an issue with access to recreation? If anybody knows the answer to that, because that was one of the things that came up. Do we, do we currently have an issue with that?
We, we picked up on some comments that were, were made as part of the community workshop about recreation, how people in the community wanted more, more recreation opportunities, more, more access to parks. And we started looking at the possibility that maybe it's a question of access and not necessarily the amount. Although the amount can also, the amount of recreation space per capita could be improved upon. But we were thinking that there may be more of an issue of access because we have a, you know, a large residential neighborhoods north of Highway 246 and our biggest park and open space areas are south of 246. And also they're all west of 101, mostly. So we were wondering if it maybe is a question of access and maybe something could be done to improve that. So those are areas that we're, we're trying to look into to see, you know, how we can make it more accessible.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Andrisic?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thanks to the presenters. I appreciate this gathering. I think it opens new minds and windows for us to be more productive. With the one thing that I've picked up on, we, I heard, you know, we had, we were designating open spa, our recreation area and we talked about River Park. And it lit up for me that in our tri-counties, that's quite a large place. And I would like to see if we have an interest in considering the designation introducing regional quote unquote for people that are considering having events or coming to Buellton. I think, you know, we're, we're we continue to be tasked by revenue-producing processes. And I think if, if we were recognized as, because we have a great business community, we have the Chamber of Commerce, they, they continue to be forthcoming and outreach to the, to the organizations in our community. And I, I would like to ask that we have somebody give some feedback on or give a report why we wouldn't want to designate regional for River Park simply because of its size and the character of it. I, I think it might, might be a go-to place for people planning events if and when COVID ever does die.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Irma.
No, I was just going to comment that, you know, as we're looking at different designation potentially for the golf course, that certainly we can consider, you know, what the nuances of what it would mean to do a regional park designation for River View Park.
You've, you've got 20 acres on one site and six on the others. So that's, that's not a small
Yeah.
block of
Definitely look at.
So.
Very good. Vice Mayor Sanchez?
Yes, and thank you for putting all this meeting together. Very nice. The, I had a question about the impact fee policy. Do, is that a different fee we're coming up with or is there an impact fee? That somebody comes in and has to pay? Or is that something?
So so we have, there's various different fee schedules that we have. So there's the planning fee schedule, then there's the water sewer fees and you know, developers come in and they pay school fees and fire fees, which are separate, school fees and fire fees are, you know, handled by the fire department and the school department, school, different school districts. But there are, like I said, planning fee schedules, there's some engineering fee schedules. And so when developers come in, they're paying impact fees based upon the fee schedules that are in place, that are currently in place. And so you know, as was mentioned in the presentation, these fee schedules haven't been up, many of them have not been updated in some time. Recently, the water sewer fees in the last few years have been updated, but the planning fee schedule has been since 2006. And traffic impact fees, I looked that up, I think 1995 was the date that I came up with. So, so yes, there are, you know, there's a whole list and the developers pay the fees that are in place. And so the, the recommendation for this one is that maybe we should be adding a policy to the land use element that the city should be regularly updating its impact fees and adjusting the fees as needed. And which would be modifying again, policy L6, which I can go back to just to kind of, there we go. So that, there it's up on the screen. So the way that this policy is worded here, you know, it, it does make a lot of the same statements that we're aiming for. But the proposal is that we modify it. There's some references to preparing, the city preparing a fiscal impact assessment. And then using this model to, you know, against project, having projects, you know, compare against this model, which was not done. But as part of, you know, since the last update. But the purpose of the proposed modification is to require development applicants for, one of the modifications is to require them, applicants for large development projects, perhaps, to prepare an impact analysis for their specific project. So that the city, they can then require the appropriate fees for their project, but just projects that don't necessarily qualify under a large development project. And the more, it may be more appropriate to just up, make sure that we're at a policy or modify this policy to make sure we're updating the fees more, fee schedule more regularly to more accurately reflect the, the impacts that they would be causing.
Didn't know, it's, it's never the new fee. If there's something added, because when you buy into the, you buy into the water, you buy into sewer, you buy in, you spend your money on your planning. And you listed all the things that you have to do. And I don't see where we would need another fee to make it an impact. You have an impact.
No, no, there's no new, no new fee, just updating the, the actual fees for each of the categories that we currently have.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else, Vice Mayor?
I know, it sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'm just gonna, I'm gonna finish up on that. I just had a, gonna hop around. The impact fee schedules that we have, we are collecting on those right now.
Yeah.
Even though this antiquated, they are being collected. I do think we, that we do need to look at them when we have fees from 1995. Absolutely. And, you know, buildings now impact traffic flow, which includes our roads. And I do believe that we need to look at that and update it so that it's as current and takes care of any impact that these new projects put on the city. The, the, the land use, I was just curious, we've got the urban growth boundary that expires in 2025 and there probably will be a push to continue that urban growth boundary. I do believe Buellton is quite capable of growing within the city limits that we have right now. But I'm just curious, you know, you've got the AHA zones, land use, the state's going into this, really pushing for, for providing homes, including a lot more ADU. Is this being studied with the land use with, with the housing, the ADU, is RENA being considered? You know, every six years we get our numbers, we're about to get them now. Is that being put into this plan right now?
So that's, yeah, that's a good question. So the, so with regards to RENA and housing related, so the housing element update actually is going to need to occur in the next two years, or actually, yeah, two years from now, we'll need to have an updated housing element, which will address a lot of what you just mentioned. So it's less, you know, the, the entire, the comprehensive general plan update will then follow. So we, we're kind of entering into a series of, you know, different element updates within the general plan, which would include a comprehensive general plan update and by 20, you know, somewhere around 2025. So
You're looking at land use right now, but the housing element will come into it a little bit later.
Correct, yes. And then all elements within a general plan, you know, must be consistent. But in terms of addressing housing specifically, that'll come in the next, we're actually currently gearing up for a housing element update, which will address that. So.
Perfect, thank you. And then the other one I had was with this social equity. I, I, you know, the state gives money to communities, to cities that have disadvantaged communities. We are not a disadvantaged community. So even if we were to pinpoint areas and parts of our community that we consider disadvantaged, which I truly believe we have in Buellton. It's really a self-help. The city needs to take care of these disadvantaged communities itself. We will not be getting any help from the city with that. I think our district elections might help that will be coming up in 2022. Transportation, I, I, I truly believe Buellton has a great transportation system, the bus system that we have operates almost around the clock. I really think that that's good. I love the idea of pushing, seeking out farmers markets, community gardens. And when we do get into the housing, I believe that we really do need to look at, of course, the RENA will do that too. Our very low income, low income. We have so many people that are living in hotels, not so many, but we have people that are families that are living in hotels, they're living in kind of sheds and backyards. And it would be really nice if everybody who lived in Buellton had an opportunity to live in housing that they kept them warm and safe. And, and I think that's something, social equity wise, that our city should make an effort to work towards. And that's all I've got.
Okay. Well, thank you for all the feedback. Those are very meaningful comments and that we'll take into, you know, taken under our belt as we move forward. So we are at a breaking point here where if somebody would like to take a break, you know, we can do a five minutes and we can all mute and my clock says 7:05, so we can come back at 7:10 and resume.
One second.
Okay, great. Okay, well, I still see a few empty chairs, but I'm, I just want to make sure that Rose is on board and available to start off the next session.
Yes.
We'll wait until Claire returns to, and maybe she can help out with that.
That was a fast five minutes.
Yeah.
Well, we're doing really well on time, so if we run, you know, take a longer break, that's fine.
Okay.
No, that's good.
Oh yeah, we are ahead of the game, aren't we? Yeah.
We were just saying that we're hungry over here in the council chambers, there's, there's.
Order pizza.
So Claire, is Rose?
Rose is here, I'm here.
Perfect, I was just wanting to make sure that you're available to start off the next segment when everybody.
So let's see, we're missing two planning commissioners, one councilman.
I'm here.
I'm here.
Well, that's, that's all they can.
You know, Claire, you should come to city council meetings, because we have like meals catered like every time. Yeah, right.
Planning, planning doesn't have that in the budget.
Yeah, right.
I have to talk to the council about that.
And Erin, you're changing slides? You're gonna flip slides?
I am, actually.
Oh, okay.
Claire, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
For some reason, I can't get City TV on my laptop, on my phone, or even YouTube, redirects you to YouTube. It doesn't come on.
That's, it's, it's live right now, it's been working, I see it on the different devices I have.
Hmm, that's weird.
Did you try refreshing, or maybe there's some sort of a setting?
It's, I don't know, because even on
I'm gonna go to YouTube.
Even, even on my tiles that I have here on my laptop, or my tab, it's, it's, it's paused.
Did you hit play?
I did, and then it's, it only goes to the archives, and then it redirects you to YouTube, and you even go there.
That's weird.
And it, it doesn't do that either, maybe it's, I don't know, maybe it's blocked for some reason.
So right now, it's, I just looked, it is paused, I think it's because you're not running the video, right, Rose?
Yeah, right now, it's just, it's on the screen, it's like a splash screen, because, yeah, we're not, we're not live right now. I mean, we are, but we aren't.
And a question, do you know how many people are watching, or do you have that, can you tell if anybody else?
I have six people viewing it, but I have two, at least two or three devices that has it on also, so half of it could be me.
Good job, thank you.
Before, before we start, I had a message for Mr. King. This is Joel Foster with K O A, Chief Steve Beazard sends his regards.
Well, hey, yeah, Tom, thanks, yeah, Tom, Tom, same for me.
Okay. He works for us, so for the last eight years, he said to say hello today.
Nice, yeah, good for him. I chose not to get another full-time job after retirement.
No, it's part-time, he's working on a special project with the county public works for us.
Well, there you go, good for him.
Yeah.
Yeah, tell him hi.
I shall.
Okay, so, if we.
Everybody here?
I could flip it over whenever you guys are ready.
Yep.
Yep.
We are live.
Alrighty, so we move on to the circulation presentation, policy direction, and I believe that's our public works director, Rose Hess.
Yes, I'll be starting off this portion for us. Okay. So, we're, we're gonna actually go over general baseline information for circulation elements. You know, just to, to recap, planning, the land use portions, already went over all the different new developments and destinations, lots of different studies that we are using to update the circulation element, and a lot of the core changes, in addition to just the updates and new references for the studies that we're implementing, we're gonna be implementing the requirements of complete streets and the VMTs, whereas, you know, complete streets, we've been implementing, but we're gonna formalize that through addition of those requirements in the policies and programs in the circulation element, and the VMTs will be definitely a new addition to our programs and policies, and Joel will be going into those in much greater detail. For the baseline summary, we review the traffic volumes, the key intersections. We've reviewed collision data with the bike impaired, and as well as vehicle to vehicle, and I believe we all got the same feedback when we looked at the community surveys, which reinforce the ideas and needs that we recommend, that we focus on in the circulation element, the same as the community, as far as safety and improvements to areas to make it a more safer pedestrian and bike-friendly community and road system. And you can see, just with the top map that's shown on the slide, a slide right now, a lot of that centers around Highway two forty-six, which is a Caltrans state facility. So we want to work on items focused on that, while it's not our jurisdiction, we have elements as far as what we want to see as a community regarding two forty-six, that's the emphasis we're going to try to do as far as portions of the updates into circulation element. So, next slide. So, again, when we're doing the assessments of the existing policies, we look through all the existing policy sections, and if you're looking through the baseline conditions report, that would be page two dash eighteen, or overall page twenty-four, that document. We went through all, all of them and made notes as far as which policies pretty much are going to continue, and we have no changes, because it's kind of ongoing that we want to list, which is most of them, we want to continue to promote bicycle and bus and alternative transportation type uses, et cetera. There's a few that require minimal modification and updates, and those are referring to items that are calling out old studies, old bicycle plans, or the old Avenue of Flags plans, things that we have superseded, and we're requiring minor changes for those listed. And so what we're going to focus on is just a few policies here, four in particular, that we want to delve a little bit further and get some input from the council and the planning commission, and we'll go over those now, and then we'll have a deeper discussion a little bit later on, that Scott will go over in more detail. So, let's see. The first one is a street policy, C dash five. And, let me see, my one's really small. So this one really is, is very basic, the existing policy has to do with the level service, is how we review and evaluate street conditions, and the new legislation talks about vehicles mile, vehicle miles traveled, the VMTs, which is the new way we're supposed to, and we are required to evaluate projects, because we want to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and we're looking at distance and miles traveled for customers, residences, workers, et cetera, to their desired locations. So we're gonna have a section devoted just to that, that Joel will go over shortly. But this is a, a big item that we want to update as far as our policies in the circulation element, that'll be kind of a significant change. We don't want to actually get rid of the level service evaluations, because it looks at it from a different perspective. Legally, by the legislation, we've got to look at vehicle miles traveled, but level service provides us with a familiar means to look at impacts of projects to capacity, delays, et cetera, for the local roads as well. So we want to keep both in there, so we can make sure that we're looking at things from multiple perspectives. So, next. So the next screen is another street policy, it's C dash twelve, and this refers to traffic calming measures implemented at the arterial approaches throughout the limits of the city, and I do apologize for all the texty stuff on here, I wanted to make sure that if we wanted to have point discussion, and if someone didn't have the baseline conditions report, or the public, they can see, this is the actual pullout of the, the particular policy, and then our findings during the valuations and the actions we're recommending. So, in this particular item, you know, it's a policy that the city has been working with Caltrans, and trying to modify Highway two forty-six, and we're trying to look at features to enhance pedestrian and bicycle modes of transportation. So what we're asking as part of the review is to revise the policy in reference to the Caltrans coordination, and specifically, you know, two forty-six, and looking to redesign that corridor, instead of the Y, especially on the west end, where we've got the wide four lanes in each direction, with the wide center median, and, you know, it's, it's a highway. And trying to reconfigure, redesign that to something much more community-friendly for what Beelton would like. In addition to that, we want to continue to focus on the one-on-one corridor as well, in particular, the southbound Avenue of Flags off-ramp at Highway one-on-one, and how that's going to incorporate into the specific plan, and working with Caltrans to see what we could do to make that exit more conducive to how we want Avenue of Flags specific plan area to work. And the next section that we want to highlight is the, out of the parking policy for the circulation element, C fifteen kind of focuses on parking and storage for recreational vehicles and boats. And this, and this particular item is specific to the Avenue of Flags area, and we're talking about the urban design plan. First and foremost, we want to update this policy to reflect the current Avenue of Flags specific plan and the requirements, and the utilization of off-street parking, and the new flex space in median two, and all the other parking configurations that we have proposed in that specific plan. But also, one of the items we want to consider, in addition to revision of this policy, and maybe new policies, which Scott, Scott will go over later on, is we want to think about the context of parking, on-street, off-street, for RVs and boats, in both long-term for residents in the community for storage, but also short-term, you know, all the truck traffic that comes in, vacationers that are coming to town with their RVs, you know, for short-term. So looking at, you know, potential partnerships or other strategies we can provide as a policy, the, the city wants to look into to take care of those visitors to the community as well. So it's not just the portion of just wrecked vehicles and boats for off-street parking for that, but we want to look at a bigger viewpoint for that. Next, we want to look at pedestrian circulation policies, and that's policy C dash twenty-six. And in this particular policy, we're looking at trying to find additional crossings of the one-on-one freeway for bicycle and pedestrian areas, and this policy calls out looking at different locations, including the extension of Second Street to McMurray over the one-on-one. So that particular scenario had been reviewed in the past, and wasn't cost beneficial to do. And then with the proximity of two forty-six, and our new Rufus T. Buell Drive, formerly DeMasa Road, and it, it seems like the distance is close enough, that if we focus on enhancing those overpasses over the one-on-one, that, that would be more beneficial for the community, and probably something more feasible that we can work with Caltrans at some point in the future to get something going as far as improvements. So the updates that we're looking for that also are additional recommendations, or what type of enhancements we can recommend for those freeway over crossings. And we do tend to focus a little bit more on the Rufus T. Buell Drive, because that is less busy as far as traffic, so it would be more conducive to, for pedestrian and bicycle enhancements in that location. And then, lastly is where you also review the programs portion of the circulation element in the same fashion as well. And reviewing this, that would be starting on page two dash twenty-four of the baseline conditions report, or page thirty overall. And similar to the policies, you know, there was a few that didn't require any changes, because it's ongoing, and a few with minimal modifications, well, mostly minimal modifications and updates to the programs, because a lot of the programs for the circulation element refer to things like we want to promote transit, and we want to have bicycle and pedestrian facilities as part of project requirements, and elements like that. So we're updating again to reflect the current plans, the current studies that are in place. We have a few, though, that we were deleting. There's about six of them there, and several of them refer to improvements related to the one-on-one freeway. The first one, we're recommending deletions for all of these, the first one being at Hana to Park Road, and the one-on-one, there is a program in there that discuss pursuit of interchange on the one-on-one. And this referred to a project that was outside of the city limits, immediately north of the city, and the project was large enough that it required some interchange improvements for the one-of-one. That was a condition, again, for a county project that has long since died. So conditions in Caltrans would not be promoting or planning for any interchange in that area, so we're recommending deletion of items like that. Now, that doesn't preclude us from continuing to advocate other major improvements on the highway to accommodate other projects in the future, but at least as far as the circulation element, it helps clean it up and bring things more current and up-to-date. And the same goes for, actually, the item of Program one G, which is the northbound hook ramp at McMurray Road. It's an old requirement in the past for old projects. It's an old requirement in the past for old projects, but hook ramps aren't a favorable, looked-upon type of ramp improvement or off-ramp improvement for their highway system, so that would be asked to be removed. And then, there's a couple of the other locations, items, programs, 1B and 1C, both had to do with adding lanes in Highway 246, one specific westbound turn lane onto 101, and also just adding lanes in general on Highway 246 between City of Buellton and Solvang, as opposed to reducing the lane width right now. And those, if you recall, we had a study, the San Ynez Valley Traffic Circulation and Safety Study, that was prepared and reviewed the entire Highway 246 corridor for circulation, both local and regionally, and also looking at safety issues, and those improvements were not determined or identified as a need. So, to be consistent with the current studies and recent reviews, we're recommending deletion of those. And lastly, there is Program Number 16, which is regarding Avenue of Flags, which was to reconfigure Avenue of Flags from four lanes to two lanes in each direction, and that portion had been completed with its restriping several years ago. And lastly, there was Program Number 17, also regarding Avenue of Flags, and these were flushed out, again, I think from old development requirements that have long since been superseded as far as installing diagonal parking to facilitate additional on-street parking for Avenue of Flag businesses, and that has also been completed. So, those items will be deleted, but there will also continue to be circulation items related to Avenue of Flags but specific to the new Avenue of Flag specific plan that had been modified into the program elements that is part of the conditions report. So, for discussion, we've just got a few items to go over as well. We'll go over them briefly here. And the main one, again, there are several on Program Number 1. Firstly, Program 1D had to do with, again, discussions of DeMasa interchange and focusing in that area as far as interchange improvements. The, again, when we looked at the corridor of 246 in the San Ynez Valley Traffic Circulation and Safety Study, there wasn't anything identified on the offshoot for that particular location, but as part of the Avenue of Flag specific plan, there was identified the need for additional connectivity enhancement. So, that's one of the areas that we're going to focus on modifying the program so that we can continue to focus on enhanced pedestrian and bicycle crossing over Highway 101. And then the next portion there is we wanted to further discuss and get input from the Planning Commission and City Council, is regarding widening of two-lane road segment of McMurray Road between Highway 246 and DeMasa Road. That's been in the elements we're looking at. As you're aware, on the south portion of the Polo Field area is the Village specific plan, and that has been, McMurray Road has been widened to the ultimate right-of-way in that location. We do, as we go further north, we constrict back down in our right-of-way because that portion on the east side is now County of Santa Barbara jurisdiction. So, and then the road widens again once we get back north of that to the Hampton Inn location to our full ultimate right-of-way as well. So, that leaves a little kind of restricted, constrained area. That's, it's not a no-man's land, no-man's land for the city because it's under the County of Santa Barbara jurisdiction. We could further delve into that as far as how council wants to pursue continuing some form of widening of our right-of-way in that location, because that leaves a gap for us for both bicycle and pedestrian access. So, it's, right now, it's just an unfinished shoulder, and widening would require probably a small retaining wall, working with the county, or some form of cooperated effort that's, we'd need to look at. So, that's something that we would like some input on as well. And then, one of the last items that was identified for different roadways is a construction of a roadway interconnect behind Albertson Shopping Center. So, there is a driveway on the south side of Albertson's, and that is used as their truck delivery route area. It, in the general plan, circulation element, it identifies that location, though, as a potential interconnect and a bypass road that could be constructed or utilized to help alleviate congestion on Highway 246. So, we've had a couple of different developments come in, looking to develop open space area south of the Albertson Center, and has tried to coordinate potential secondary access for their site for better circulation to that driveway access area with no success. So, we wanted to seek further direction from Planning Commission and Council. Is this something we want to continue? The city itself has not proceeded with any formal request for access in that road. We've just been requiring developers to seek potential access to that road for their projects. That's something we would definitely like feedback on as well.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for Rose, please.
Sure.
Rose, would that be the, there was a fellow, at one time, it was Carl Ward, had a plan laid out for ingress and egress off of the highway, and it was just right there, and actually, it wound up being a hook ramp, off-ramp, it was just, and I don't know whatever happened to it, but it lingered for quite a while. Is that, is that one of the, is that one of the ones that's on your list of preferred deletions?
Yes, that is. The property, there was space that was reserved on that development between McMurray Road and 101.
Yep.
It's, right now, it's just utilized as like picnic tables with some landscaping.
Pretty expensive picnic table.
Yes. So, that dedication is actually still through there, but with the amount of traffic and the right-of-way, there's, that's not going to come into fruition.
A huge, a huge accident coming.
Right.
Could the council have introduced a request for getting that, sending that to a burial ground somewhere?
The project?
Yes.
Yeah, we would just.
The idea, the idea of the hook ramp, I mean.
Right. Yeah, that's, we're recommending the deletion of that program in the circulation element.
Okay. Do you, could we help speed that up anyway by mentioning that as one of the action items of this gathering?
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm ready to make the motion, but.
Go ahead, Rose.
We have to have the meeting first.
No problem. And then, let's see, so, we'll just, we're almost done with my portions. There's circulation program number six that we wanted to go over with the City Council, and it talks about the corridor of Highway 246 between the City of Buellton and the City of Solvang, and it identifies trying to do a study regarding the feasibility of four lanes through that area between Buellton and Solvang, or creation of a secondary bypass in that area. So, again, we've recently completed the San Ynez Valley Traffic Circulation and Safety Study that did the whole review of that corridor, and widening for additional lanes was not a recommendation. There was widening, some minimal widening recommended in order to accommodate bicycle lanes, make sure there's still safety shoulders, but nothing that would create additional lanes and create another speedway similar to the west end of Highway 246. In addition, they've also been reviewing the San Ynez River Valley Trail and looking for alternate routes for bicycle lanes, and found that very challenging to find something off-road, off-Highway 246. So, chances of a feasibility of a secondary bypass road between the cities at that point would probably be very unlikely. So, this is another item we're kind of seeking direction on. Usually, the areas, we're looking for traffic calming and enhancements for bicycle and pedestrians, so addition of more car or vehicle travel lanes is not conducive to that primary goal. So, some food for thought for further discussion on that later. And then, we've got circulation program number seven, and this one is definitely for food for thought. This is, has to do with how we review standards for roads and improvements of roadways within the city. Pretty much speaking, we're pretty built out, and any way we look throughout the city, widening is not necessarily, is not going to be an easy option in order to add lanes, other specific bikeways, things like that, without looking at acquiring additional property. So, when you're reviewing the baseline conditions of the report, and we're looking at the assessment of programs for the circulation element, we wanted to consider how we may reword these requirements. For example, the consideration of selective widening of streets to improve safety and efficiency. We may reword things, you know, widening or reduction of street width for, to improve safety or efficiency, kind of just reworking some of the language. And the one item, I did want to touch on this, which, again, links back to the bigger discussion we'll have later on, is regarding removal of on-street parking, because that's an item that was specifically listed on here. And we know from past project experience that on-street parking is critical for a lot of our business areas. So, we want to take that into consideration when we're revising this policy as well. And the last item I will want to go over is circulation program number nine, and this talks about expanding the ride-share program for the City of Buellton. And this focused on the creation of the city's first park-and-ride, which was actually completed on the south side of Avenue of Flags. And when that project was constructed, it proved tremendously popular, and we had so much use and overuse of that site. We had parking that overflow into the residential area, which then sparked the need for another park-and-ride, and which was finally located on the north end of Avenue of Flags on a Caltrans property that we were able to work with them on a relinquishment process that would allow the city to prepare plans for a second park-and-ride, and if those were to be processed and approved, the land would be relinquished from Caltrans to the city. So, we've run into many roadblocks with that particular project, just an immense amount of requirements after requirements that we can't, it's been, it's been more difficult than trying to get the sidewalk on Highway 246 between Avenue of Flags and the 101 freeway. So, and also, so that's been a stumbling block, and another stumbling block has been our monitoring of the demand for a second park-and-ride. You know, there's definitely a demand for bus stops and parking for those commuters trying to access those locations that may be different from the South Avenue of Flags location. But the park-and-ride location on South Avenue of Flags has not been completely utilized over the past several years. You know, we've been monitoring the location, and during the week at the highest point pre-COVID, there was maybe at least a third of the parking spots still available. We didn't have that overflow problem anymore. And now, with the success of remote working, telecommuting, the needs and the demand for the park-and-ride facilities, I think, have shifted. So, that's something that we would want the council and the commission to further direct us as far as, yes, I think, overall, we want to continue to promote ride-sharing, use of transit, et cetera. But for specific programs such as creating other park-and-ride lots, we want to consider, do we continue, do we want to continue down that route before we continue to expend additional funds on that? So, with that, we've got some more details we want to cover in the circulation element and the program. We're going to shift next into more detail and discussion on vehicle miles traveled and how that impacts our circulation element updates, and I will turn it over to Mr. Joel Falter.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm going to give you a brief overview of vehicle miles traveled, or VMT as it's commonly referred to, so you'll have a better sense of how new development projects will be developed in the future. And so, by way of background, Senate Bill 743 was signed into law in September of 2013 by Governor Brown, and it directed the Office of Planning and Research to develop new SEQA Transportation Impact Guidelines, and those draft guidelines were released in December of 2018 for review, and in July of 2020, just last year, the new SEQA guidelines went into effect and are law statewide. And in that sense, it says VMT is the new metric for assessing transportation impacts. Next slide. So, the primary purpose of SB 743 was to encourage infill development, and by way of background, you know, the Bay Area and Southern California have been investing enormous sums of money in transit project, and the thinking was by encouraging higher-density development that those investments in transit rail and bus would be better supported and would encourage more people to walk, to ride bikes, to ride transit. And as SB 743 was being finalized, the thinking up in Sacramento became, well, why don't we apply this idea to the entire state, not just those parts of the state that are investing heavily in transit? But that thinking had unforeseen consequences, and it's created many challenges for smaller cities. But at the end of the day, the overall goal behind VMT is to reduce vehicle trips and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Next slide. So, for environmental impact. So for environmental impact reports, we're now directed to move away from level of service analysis. And apply vehicle miles of travel per capita. And the threshold of significance is now that the project must be 15% less than some average. And that average might be regional trips. It might be sub-regional trips. It might be the whole city, a portion of the city, a district within the city. But it must meet that criteria as part of an EIR. So for example, if you had two projects that are exactly the same, let's say an office building. And one was two stories and one was three stories or four stories. They in essence would have same vehicle miles traveled per capita. So needless to say, this has generated a lot of discussion. In smaller cities and areas without transit infrastructure is, well, how do we address these impacts? And how do we meet the goals of SB 743? Next slide. So now you can see some of the challenges that it's created for smaller cities. Some cities can't do regional modeling or don't have the resources to do a regional model. To develop a regional model or apply a model. Some cities are not clear on how do we screen out smaller projects that fall below that criteria? What if you don't have a robust transit system? Remember, the original criteria was to be applied to cities with robust transit infrastructure development. And many smaller cities throughout the state don't. And then finally, there's the subject of mitigation measures and mitigation measures. That make local sense, and I'll cover that in a minute. And then finally, well, how are you going to monitor these mitigation measures? And this last point is very important to consider down the road. Because under SB 743 and the new guidelines, you are required, required by law. To monitor that TDM program for each project throughout the life of that project. Next slide. How do we screen a project? Well, if the project was in a transit priority area, or if it was in a low VMT area. Then the project might screen itself out from further analysis. And if you have a small project, such as the numbers here suggest, the location may screen you out. Although there are varying interpretations as to what the definition of small is. In different cities or region. Or in some cases, the land use itself might screen itself out. So that is if the project is local serving. Such as a small retail development that would serve the community. Whether it's a school project, a park project, a church, some other local development. That it may be possible to say, well, that project will have no regional impact, will have no environmental impact. And it is screened itself out. But whatever you do, whatever metric you apply, it must be defensible. Should the project be challenged in court? And, you know, again, you can see that 110 trips per day. Was the OPR suggestion as a threshold for screening projects out. And then there are some examples here of how other communities in the region. In Santa Barbara County, Goleta Santa Maria, they've essentially adopted the OPR suggestion. We've looked in some other parts of Southern California with similar densities and land use and city sizes. Western Riverside County has a similar metric to OPR. But then you get to Moreno Valley and they've applied a different metric. So again, there are many ways to skin a cat, so to speak. But whatever metric the city chooses, it must be defensible. Next slide, please. So when it comes to conducting transportation. Studies for new development projects, there are essentially two avenues the city can follow. For Sequo related documents, a project has to be evaluated on five different metrics. And I'm missing a metric there, I apologize. That is, is the project consistent with local and regional plans? Is it compliant with the VMT per capita threshold? Is the project trip inducing? Do the access points and geometrics to the project and its driveways pose a safety threat? And the fifth bullet, which I apologize, I forgot to include focuses on safety. So does the project create a safety problem? Does it improve safety? These five things must be addressed in a Sequo level analysis. That would be conducted as part of an EIR if that were to be required. Now for non-Sequo analyses, what would be done at the local level, which you do now. For a non-Sequo study is you can still look at level of service. Because many cities have said, well, we'd still like to know what the impacts of the project are. On some of our study intersections, it might be at a signal location. It might be at a stop controlled intersection. So we want to know what's happening there. And we also may want to know, well, what's happening on operations on our roadway segments? In different parts of the community or in the city? How do we address those impacts? And then finally, does the project have any impacts on bike, pedestrian mobility? On our transit system, on our transit service? So for non-Sequo studies, you could still require these elements and other elements. That you so choose be undertaken as a condition of approval of that project in the city. The only thing to keep in mind is the level of service, the operations. And those metrics are not permitted under Sequo. Next slide, please. Next slide. Can I have next slide? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Is this the right one or let's see, okay, this one here?
Yes, I apologize, my screen froze for a moment. So overview of the TDM toolbox. And categories that can be applied to mitigate the impacts of a project under Sequo. And remember that mitigation measures are no longer focused on roadway improvements. The objective is to reduce vehicle trips and improve air quality. So these seven categories represent ways to mitigate project impacts. And there are many ways to apply them. They just need to make sense for Bulton. So these seven categories that you can see here on the screen, starting with parking. All can be defined as you see fit for the city. And every city will have different kinds of requirements and have different tools. And measures that would work in the city. So under parking, a city could say reduce the amount of parking required as part of a development. Or you might require parking be paid for at a new development. And under transit, you might say, well, we're going to require shelters be installed. As part of your development to improve the attractiveness of transit. Or we may ask you to subsidize increased service. Or we may want you to implement a new type of service. Or introduce micro-transit to the city as a way to offset the impacts of your project. Or introduce education and enforcement programs and promotions. That educate people about the benefits of ride sharing and carpooling and taking transit and not driving. You may use commute trip reductions and some things that might fall into place there. Or developing more rideshare programs or school carpool programs. And then there's shared mobility where we're looking at bike share and car share programs. And other forms of transportation such as scooters. So programs like that. And then there's bike infrastructure, Rose talked about that a bit earlier. Where we might look at introducing bike parking infrastructure at developments or on-street. Or adding more bike lanes in the city or encouraging. And retail operators to install showers that would allow people to commute by bike to work. And take a shower when they get to work and have a place to change their clothes. And then, of course. There are neighborhood enhancements such as traffic calming and complete streets. So these are the seven categories that are recognized that fit the TDM definition. But within these seven categories, you could have as many tools. That you feel are appropriate and would fit with the city of Bulton. Because many cities have different projects and different programs, but not everything fits. With every city and especially in smaller cities. And of course, the key challenge to keep in mind here is you have to quantify. How these TDM programs will mitigate the project's impacts. And again, as I said earlier, you will have to monitor these programs. And be able to defend any challenges that these tools are actually going to mitigate. And reduce vehicle trips. Next slide, please. So the next steps that the city will be faced with is. Developing new traffic study guidelines. And then within those guidelines, you would address the metrics I've just talked about. Both for Sequo and non-Sequo level studies. You'll identify the thresholds of significance. You would define the TDM toolbox, what tools you believe would best fit future developments in the city. Whether or not you want to include level of service as part of your traffic study guidelines. And any other operations metrics to make sure the impacts of projects that do not go through an EIR. Will not have adverse impacts on mobility in the city. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Joel, for your presentation. I believe, yes, Scott is the next.
I think Scott's next. I am, thank you. I had to figure out the unmute button on this. I think I've got it set. All right, we're to kind of the wrap-up point here, the summary point for the circulation element discussion. And I want to run through some, a couple of different aspects of what we're looking for as staff with regard to this. Unlike the land use element, which is kind of just a technical update intended to reflect the current state of development within the city. The circulation element is being looked at as a comprehensive update. And a lot of people might wonder why we're looking at a comprehensive update. We've got a city that's relatively well-built out. It's not like we're going to move the location of streets or sidewalks or anything like that. Because these things don't generally change much once they're built. And because there's just not a lot of room left to build things. However, many of the policies and programs that are in the existing circulation element are going to continue because this is the case. But there are a number of policy revisions which are going to be proposed or which have been proposed. And Rose has gone over a lot of those here and Joel went over one as well. And they're proposed due to shifts in city priorities. In other words, the city, in the way it looks at things, the way it looks at its future. In terms of development, in terms of its economic base and such, has shifted over the past 20 years or so. I guess it's only 13 years or so. And they need to be readdressed. Similar, there are a lot of revisions to programs which are going to be necessary as well for a number of different reasons. But primarily, those are going to include the fact that the land use pattern that was in place at the time these programs were adopted has changed. There's been new legislation, as Rose discussed at the beginning of this circulation element presentation. And again, the shifting priorities that the city may have looking at policy moving forward. So the first set we're going to go over here, oh, back up just a second. First thing we're going to go over here are policy changes. And what we're looking for from the council and the planning commission on this are either concurrents with these policy changes. Or an alternative direction, if the council or the commission would like to see us look at these different policies or go a different direction with them. We'd like to hear from you on that. So we can go to the next slide. And you'll recognize all of these, they've been discussed by Rose previously. I'm just going to go through them very quickly so that you can make a quick note and identify which ones, if any, you would like to indicate an alternative direction on. Or have comments or questions on. The first one has to do with circulation policies of C1 and C2. And these deal with alternate transportation modes. Circulation and essentially the changes that are proposed here are to include reference to the Complete Streets Act. As discussed earlier here. Circulation Policy C3 addresses congestion management plan. And the policy proposal is to reference the current regional SB CAG plans and programs. Just to make sure that our city's general plan and all of its. Documents that are adopted subsequent to that also reflect the goals and policies of these. Larger regional plans and programs. Policy C4, this is, has to do with circulation features within the Avenue of Flags specific plan. Essentially, this is a policy revision just to ensure that references to the old urban design plan for Avenue of Flags. Is replaced with the reference to the specific plan and to ensure that the guidelines. And policies that are established by the specific plan are reflected in the general plan circulation element as well. Likewise, circulation policy C15 addresses these same issues, particularly with regard to parking policies. But we're also looking for some direction here as to how. Or whether or not private development and public-private partnerships should be included. As mechanisms to help provide off-street parking and possibly RV and boat storage within the Avenue of Flags area. Go to the next slide, please. Circulation Policy C5 is the level of service threshold which Joel just spoke about. The city is required under state law to reflect VMT as a metric for impacts under Sequo. However, the city may, and I would imagine probably would want to retain some sort of reference to level of service or LOS. As a general plan standard, just as Joel indicated. So that we have the ability to look at this from a different perspective to see that, yes, even though we may be reducing the total vehicle miles traveled. We still have an idea as to how that the new traffic pattern will impact our intersections and roadways moving forward. Circulation Policy C12 addresses traffic calming measures. In particular. Traffic calming measures requiring coordination with Caltrans on Route 246. And SB CAG Transportation Planning Grant Requests. There's also the issue of referencing coordination with Caltrans for traffic calming efforts. At the Highway 101 off-ramp onto Avenue of Flags, that's the southbound off-ramp. And also to reflect the Avenue of Flags specific plan, traffic calming policies and standards within the circulation element. Next slide, please. Circulation Policies 18 and 19, actually all of them on this page, they're all bicycle related. That we need to update languages in the circulation element to replace the Bulton Bike Ways Master Plan document with. document with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, which is in place currently. And then to incorporate the related goals and policies. The city needs to revise policy number 21, or may want to consider revising policy 21 to encourage bike racks in particular, but other facilities as well on public transportation, either on the buses themselves or at transit stops to facilitate moving people between public transit and their ultimate origin or destination. Circulation policy 22, again, is a continuation of this discussing bike lockers or bike racks at parking facilities that may be constructed in the future. Again, trying to get particularly in a public parking lot, allowing people to park their car in the morning and pick up their bike and move their bike to wherever they're working. It just allows for some additional usage of these public parking facilities and reducing those short trips between between the origin of drivers and their place of work or the place that they're intending to visit, to shop or to work, whatever. And the circulation policy number 26 is again, looking at the potential for enhancing pedestrian access and bicycle access across the overpass at Rufus T. Buell Drive. The overpass itself is fairly narrow and the pedestrian access right now is is sparse. I'm not, you know, we're not sure at this point what kinds of improvements can take place. But this type of policy would inform those looking at the circulation element that the city is interested in investigating alternatives for improving the pedestrian and bicycle access across this overpass. And it may open the city up to some possible grant funding opportunities in the future for some construction projects down the road. Next slide. Okay. The next phase of this discussion we're going to talk about has to do with the circulation element programs. And on these, we're actually seeking a little more a little more specific policy direction. So if you've got any thoughts as to which direction you'd like to see the city go, this isn't as simple as revising a policy. These are actual programs that the city may or may not want to put into place. So we can go through the ones here that are within the circulation element. Next slide. Circulation program number one, and you'll recall that Rose talked about this. And there were several other subprograms within this program. Those have all been deleted. Those had to do, I believe, with the hook off-ramp and some other other improvements that for one reason or another are no longer feasible or no longer desired. But these three remain. And we want to see if we can get some direction from the city council. A on the Rufus T. Buell Drive overpass improvements. As Rose mentioned, there's a segment of McMurray Road between 246 and Rufus T. Buell Drive. It's an unincorporated area that stretches down to the roadway there. And it presents a bottleneck in the flow of McMurray Road. And we're looking for direction from the city council. Is that something we would ultimately look at, want to look at widening in the future? And then subprogram F here, roadway interconnection behind the Albertson Center. That is something that was identified previously. It is something that we've always hoped we could come up with. There is a potential project looking at that location right now. So it may not be feasible to incorporate this by the time the circulation element comes to hearing. But we'd like to get the city council's opinion on this also. Next slide, please. Circulation program number four, traffic mitigation fees. This goes along with the discussion that Rose had earlier, as well as the discussion that Andrea had regarding development impact fees. One of those development impact fees is traffic mitigation. It's something that is intended to provide funding by private developers to the city for the improvement and maintenance of the city's circulation system. As is noted, it's been many years since these have been updated. And we're looking for direction as to whether or not a policy should be in place within the element or a program which is in place to maybe specify a period of time within which these mitigation fees should be reviewed and possibly updated. Circulation program seven, again, on-street parking standards. Rose discussed the removal of a potential policy or potential program that would have highlighted the removal of on-street parking. She noted it's clear that that's probably not the direction the city wants to go. And so if we're going to leave on-street parking in place or encourage on-street parking in some locations, does the city wish to undertake the development of parking standards for those on-street parking locations? Circulation program number nine. As Rose mentioned, the Park and Ride, the Northern Park and Ride Lot proposed. Is there any interest in continuing to pursue the acquisition and construction of this site? Next slide, please. Okay. A couple of others and potentially new policies. There is, you know, should the city be looking at a requirement to create traffic study guidelines? These would be essentially a set of guidelines that would influence those who would be preparing traffic studies into what the city would be looking for in an end product. So that when a traffic study is prepared, we're certain that a private property owner developer is not wasting their money having a traffic study prepared that is not going to meet the city's requirements, is not going to provide the city what it's looking for. Should we have, and this would include VMT LOS thresholds. We need to adopt SEQA thresholds. We need to look at, and that would be for the VMT side of things. The LOS, we currently have a threshold for LOS in the general plan. It's, I believe, level of service C or better for any intersection within the city. The city council may want to look at revising that, eliminating it altogether, or or something between. We also may want to look at preparing these guidelines, these thresholds in conjunction with a traffic mitigation fee study, as mentioned earlier. That could all be done as part of one package, moving through the implementation of the circulation element here. There's been a lot of discussion over the years regarding finding or maintaining what we have or finding new locations for commercial truck parking and RV parking. Both RV parking could be within our residential areas. But certainly, commercial truck parking has a few locations within the city that have traditionally been used for this type of parking. They've been under some pressure by private property owners and and other users of the city in recent years to try and restrict those areas. I know it's been the city council's position for many years that commercial trucks have a place to park here in the city of Buellton and that that should continue. So do we need circulation element policies created to reflect that position of the city council? We can take some discussion on that. And as we move forward here in the process. If I can have Andrea switch screens for me real quick. I'd like to apologize. It seems I lost a couple of slides today. I had a computer crash and I didn't pick up on the fact that a couple of slides were missing. So we're going to switch over to to a table that's in the baseline report that you've all got. This is within chapter four, the circulation element. And in particular, I'm looking at pages number seven and eight. It's a table, table 4.1, I believe, is what it's called. And Andrea is going to get that up for me here in just a second. I apologize for putting her on the spot. She did not know this was coming until just a few minutes before I got, I started talking to her, so.
That's okay. No problem. Can you see my screen here?
I can, but I, I see your screen, but it's still showing the circulation element slides.
Oh, it is. Okay. Let's see. Just one second here. Quick out of that. Can you read this?
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm operating on two different computers right now. And the one I'm, there we go. The one I'm, I've got my camera on, it's not the one I've got the table up on. So I can't switch between the two. All right. Here we go. What you're looking at here on table number 41 is a list of selected objectives and potential policies that have been taken from the Vision Plan. I believe it was in 2012, the Vision Plan was adopted. Yeah, 2012 Vision Plan. And these are objectives and potential policies that come from that Vision Plan and that may be applicable or desirable to insert into an updated circulation element. And so I don't really want to spend a lot of time going over all of these. Some of them are, I think, more important than others, but all of them, I think, deserve a little bit of consideration. And we'd like some direction as to which ones, if any, the city council feels they'd like to investigate further. We can always come back to them later, but this is, this is a good time to insert these in right now. So I'm just going to, I'm just going to read through them very quickly. I typically don't just like to read these, but since I don't have my slides, we'll go ahead and do that. The first set of objectives has to do with increasing the connectivity for pedestrians and cyclists. And the Vision Plan suggested developing and implementing a bikeway and pedestrian master plan that considers both recreation and commuter cycling and connections to other communities. I'll just warn you upfront, you'll note that there's a lot of references to this bikeway and pedestrian master plan. There's a trail, there are several policies proposed here having to do with trails and walkway connections and such. Some of, some of the documents we've been talking about here exist now in a different format than I think what was identified in this document. But you'll all kind of understand where they're coming from here. Working with Caltrans to develop a plan for traffic calming and safer crossings on Highway 246. This has been a longtime desire of the city. Initiating a study to expand or develop an electric shuttle transit service that would operate solely within the city limits. Initiating a study to improve pedestrian and bicycle access across Highway 101. These considerations could include, but wouldn't be necessarily limited to, a new pedestrian or bicycle bridge, pedestrian bicycle improvements to existing over crossings at Rufus T. Buell Drive and Highway 246, or designating Rufus T. Buell Drive Bridge for pedestrians and cyclists only. These, again, these were things that came out of a Vision Plan, given the fact that Rufus Buell Drive is a freeway, a highway interchange. It may not be feasible to do this, but if the council feels it's worthwhile pursuing that as an option, we can include that in the circulation element. Develop a trail and passive recreation areas along Zaca Creek. And then plan improvements in conjunction with the Bike Ways and Trails Pedestrian Master Plan. The next objective is promoting attractive, well-maintained neighborhoods and districts. And one of the objectives would be to evaluate Central Avenue and other highly traveled streets for traffic calming improvements. Another would be to continue implementing street scape improvements along Highway 246 consistent with improvements near the Avenue of Flags to include landscaping and pedestrian improvements. And I'll be discussing that here in a few moments when we get to the last point I'll talk about. Providing a the next objective is provide an environment that appeals to and supports both residents and visitors. Implementing improvements to the gateways of the city to include street scapes, landscaping and city entry signage. Accommodate large trucks and truck drivers by providing safe and convenient parking and amenities outside of pedestrian oriented areas. Move on to the next page, please. Okay. Objective 5.1, coordinate development improvements along Avenue of Flags to generate activity. Obviously, a lot of this was incorporated within the specific plan that was adopted for Avenue of Flags. But some of the the policies that were proposed were to incorporate downtown bikeways and trails to conduct a corridor study and select traffic pattern refinements. And I know that was done as part of the specific plan. Enhance parking options by creating public parking areas. And Median 2, which should be open very soon, is a prime example of that. Coordinate site planning to create a network of pedestrian paths, public spaces and outdoor dining areas. Maintain an open dialogue with community members and one of the policies proposed for this was to consider creating a permanent location on Highway 246 for attractive signs and banners promoting city-sponsored events. Demonstrate leadership and environmental sustainability through a signature program. At the time, the discussion was to explore options for a trike and bike program promoting greater use of those vehicles for local trips and for tourism, along with a community trike paleo event or paleo event. And I'm not sure, not sure what that is. But that was, again, that was a proposal of the Vision Plan. Maintain a compact city form bounded by natural and rural areas. As you're all aware, the city is contained by an urban growth boundary. One of the policies here is to direct growth into undeveloped and underutilized areas within the urban growth boundary. The mechanism for this, should the council decide to go this direction, would be an infill development ordinance. And we can, we can work toward providing some incentives to have these infill, remaining infill parcels developed rather than create, rather than removing buildings from currently developed parcels and redeveloping that. Another policy might involve an ordinance which de-incentivizes big box stores in order to promote small locally owned businesses that are readily accessible by foot, bike and public transit. Promoting establishment of a river trail within Buellton with multiple access points. That's something that we've been working on for some time. And through the Parks and Recreation Master Plan process, provide a network of accessible parks, gardens and open spaces within the city. Can we scroll down a little further? Okay. And then lastly, as part of an objective to adopt green building standards, we want to identify and specify materials and installation techniques for repaving roadways and parking lots in order to reduce water runoff and heat generation. So I apologize, it took a little longer than I would like on these things, but I did want you to have an opportunity to hear and see them all. So that if you had any comments on any of them, we can get those at this time. If we can go back to the slide presentation, it would be great. Okay. There we go. All right. Last thing I want to bring up is, is referred to in the baseline report or in the document we're looking at here is growth scenario number three. And we're looking at it, we're talking about it as skinny 246. And the whole point of this is to try and decide on methods by which we can minimize the width of Highway 246, the width of the highway travel lanes through a number of different techniques. Some of those were discussed by Joel at our previous workshop through the discussion of the Complete Streets Toolbox. And there are any number of different mechanisms by which we can, we can look at reducing the travel lanes and improving the sides of the, or the center of the highway, whether it be through medians, landscape areas, bike paths, pedestrian paths. But the direction we'd like for the city tonight is very simple in this regard. Do we want to look at the full length of Highway 246 through the city from east to west? If not, would we prefer to focus on particular sections? Some of the sections that come to mind we may want to focus on are the far western section from the city limits to, say, Sycamore or maybe Valley Dairy to improve a pedestrian crossing there and minimize the width of travel lanes to be crossed by a pedestrian crossing. There's also the inclusion of additional right-of-way on the east side of Highway 101 near the Thumbelina neighborhood where we might be able to extend the sidewalk along the north side of 101 there if those eucalyptus trees were to be removed and Caltrans were to widen the street in that location. to widen the, the, the street in that location. While it's not exactly part of this particular discussion, you know, we could also look at extending the sidewalks, not only in that area, but throughout the Thumbelina neighborhood. It's something that we've, we've had issues raised with the city previously as well. Are there preferred improvements the city council would like to focus on? Pedestrian walkways, for instance, bike paths. Would you like to look at landscaping and lighting? You want to keep it all on the table. These are the kinds of things we're looking at. Just as, as a matter of clarification, we call this growth scenario number three. It's something we're handling kind of separately through this document, and there's a reason for that. It's not actually a growth scenario. When we look at the growth scenarios from a land use perspective, we're talking about changes to, to residential, commercial, and industrial types of land uses and how that's going to impact the ultimate population, residential population and commercial population within the city. This particular set of improvements we're talking about, we're referring to it as a growth scenario specifically so that it can be addressed through the environmental impact report process. A lot of these improvements are going to wind up being exempt from CEQA, don't need to be addressed through the EIR process. But staff's thought in, in walking through this is if we involve these improvements in the EIR process, we've got some sort of documentation so that in the event Caltrans comes to us down the road and is more accepting of these proposals, the environmental work is largely done. They, they can't fall back on, gee, we need to do CEQA review on this, even though we may consider them to be exempt. It just gives us a layer of, of some additional, let's say, some additional credibility when we're talking about this, to have this reviewed and know what the impacts are likely to be. So with that, I'll kind of, I'll leave it here, but I just want to make sure that if you have any thoughts on what these growth scenario or what this growth scenario, for lack of a better term, should look like, please let us know. Is there another slide? Okay. I, I, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I'll just say this is a comprehensive update. We've discussed that already. The importance of this is, is that through this process, the ultimate circulation element document that is ultimately adopted is going to be an establishment of a formal policy direction by the city. While it can always be changed down the road, it's important to get as much into it as possible as we can, and, and the way to ensure that as much of that gets in there through this process is to give us as much as you can right now. So I'll conclude my remarks here. I'm happy to answer any questions. We can go back in the slides if you'd like to look at any of them, but we are awaiting any direction you may have. Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
Since Scott's still on, I, I had a question for him. With this big push between the county, Lompoc, and Vandenberg to expand the whole base, would a CEQA evaluation of 246, would that be able to cover us if we were trying to do a circulation element with the city streets and the calming effect? Would that give us any better way to mitigate some of those problems if that was to happen?
Well, I, I don't, I don't know at this point because it's, it's unclear what that, you know, what that ultimate build out of the Lompoc-Vandenberg area would look like. It would be difficult to, to model that. We could certainly take a stab at it and see. But I think what this gives us is, it allows us to go to Caltrans and say, look, if we reduce the width of Highway 246 through the city, we've demonstrated through this process that we can accommodate the traffic that moves through it and that we can enhance the safety and the, the accessibility of that corridor for pedestrians and cyclists as well. I know Caltrans is all for that, but their, their ultimate... I, I, I don't want to speak for them, but it seems to me that their, their ultimate goal is being able to ensure that they can, they can move the number of cars from point A to point B that need to move that direction. What this does is it gives us a leg to stand on by saying, we've done the counts, we, we can demonstrate that that volume of traffic can be moved through here. Now, obviously, if things change in the future with Vandenberg and that volume of traffic goes way up, we may find ourselves with a, with an outdated document that doesn't demonstrate what it needs to anymore. But for the foreseeable future, this is a good place to start, at least in my opinion.
Great. Thanks, Scott.
So we move on now to our planning commission, city council comments, where after all this information you've thrown at us, we've got about three minutes to piece to respond, right? Yes, thank you. I'm thinking that we should have a completely separate workshop on the circulation element, but I will, I will go on from there. I have two questions. I'm just going to start with the commission comments and questions. This might answer it for other people before we make final comments. If Rose or Scott could talk a little bit more about this number one F, the construction of the roadway interconnect behind Albertson's. I just really, I kind of don't understand that. Is it, is it a continuation of McMurray to an off-ramp to the 101? Is that what this is regarding?
No, I don't believe so. So the interconnect on, behind Albertson's, it's just kind of creating like a secondary path of travel parallel, parallel to Highway 246, kind of, so you don't have to go through that McMurray 246 intersection, because that's a congested intersection.
Almost, almost kind of like an alley or street behind.
Correct. Right, right.
Oh.
We've been, I mean, not with that particular route, but there was progress made when the driveway between the Patty Bakes Shopping Center and Albertson Shopping Center was opened.
Right.
And that took a lot of effort and lobbying with the different property owners and business owners there with the Albertson's Center to get that working as well. So that is definitely, I think, a little plus towards getting that, but, you know, that it's through that back access point, there isn't any other connection opportunities. You know, it's not...
Okay.
They don't have anything blocking people from taking that route, but...
Right.
Certainly nothing official.
But that interconnect, would that only, that would only affect or be negotiated between the city and the owners of the Albertson's property, right? It wouldn't include all those other, you know, whatever else is in the, that, that whole center?
I don't believe so, until it gets, well, we'd have to look at it a little bit more holistically, because where, you know, where then is the rest of the path of travel, which we would assume would continue Easterly at that point through the rest of the shopping centers? And so there, there's somewhat consent because the driveways are now connected there at least. So there's something through there, it's just not, you know, nothing official. And it was just, it was just also a point of discussion too, as the property south of Albertson's is looking to develop, and we keep...
Right.
Bringing up to them, hey, let's, you wanted to, we suggest that you discuss a potential access through there just to help circulation for their onsite, you know, as well.
Right. Right. Yeah. Okay. Okay. The other one, quick explanation again, Rose or Scott, is C-15 is the, I, I need a little more clarification on, that's the, are we trying to encourage public-private agreements for off-street parking for RV and boats? Is that what we're doing with C-15?
That and, but, but I think primarily what we're looking for is, is using private development projects and public-private partnerships that may be proposed along Avenue of Flags to require them to improve on-street parking along their properties or to provide parking off-street with, in this, in this case. Right now, obviously, we have Median Two, which is the, which is a public prop, a public project, but it's conceivable that down the road, someone may determine that it's, it's just as economically viable to build a parking lot and provide parking for commercial projects along the avenue that's, it's accessible by the public, either as a, as a private project or as public-private partnership. We just want to leave that avenue open within the, within the specific plan to encourage that, so that we don't wind up with a situation where we, where parking is a nightmare on the avenue.
Okay. Okay, got it. Okay, um, thank you both for that. I'm going to turn it over to my fellow commissioners, and we will go back to Commissioner Mercado.
Just want to thank staff for a great circulation element update and policies, and I agree with all, pretty much all the changes that have been brought forward and look forward to seeing them get implemented.
Okay. Commissioner Leggett.
Hi there. Thank you, Joel, Scott, Rose. I too, I mean, concurrents with all the policy revisions. Thank you for sharing those objectives, Scott. I agree with all of them. So I, I, I trust that I'm in accordance with, the year priorities are the same as mine. So I don't have any objections at all. As far as the overpass, good luck solving that one. It's a pipe dream, but man, that's the one I would love to solve, how to deal with those. When something comes to mind, I'll let you all know, but thank you for the presentation. You know, again, I think you did a great job. I'm on board with anything you get accomplished.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sarkia.
Oh. You muted? No, good. Thanks for the presentation. Yeah, whatever you can do to, to continue to improve the lighting across all of Beulton, not just 246 from one end to the other, I'm in really favor of. The landscaping is, I, I noticed has always been improved every year, and I appreciate that. There was a, the thing about traffic study guidelines, I, I thought there was already something in place, and, and I was wondering what the counts were. I'd like to see if that published, how many, how many vehicles enter and exit Beulton on a daily basis, weekly, monthly, and yearly, to give us some idea of what our traffic flow is. And... The other thing was... A lot of that, I'd like to have another meeting on it. It was just all, all kind of new to me, and I'd, I'd like to get another meeting on it. But thank you very much. That's all I had to add.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Blochdike.
Boy, can you hear me this time? Okay, good. There was a lot to go over today, and, and I wanted to say, I did agree with a lot of, a lot of what I heard today presented. And I, I thank the presenters, Scott and Rose and, and all that. And anyway, I do want to encourage the widening of McMurray Road. I guess it was established that we were going to not encourage that. I don't know, but, but that I would like to see happen. Circulation Program Nine, North, the North Park and Ride. I, I think I understood that you want to take that out of consideration because we have not as many people using the South Park and Ride because of COVID, and I think that's short sighted. I think we need to consider more parking for park and rides based on encouraging mass transit and ride sharing. And then, since I've only got three minutes, I got to go as fast as I can. The, the, let me see, skinny of 246 between the west entrance to Beulton and Sycamore, I strongly suggest, I think it'd be a great idea to slow traffic down. I, I drive between Sycamore and my nursery in just west of town every day, and, and when I pull back, to pull back on the road to go back into Beulton, the traffic is almost always going 65, 70 miles per hour. And when I get into Beulton where it slows down to 45, they're still going 55. The, the, the police have a field day out there. So like to see it slowed down. That's the gist of what I have to say. I'm sure I can come up with more, but, but a lot of it I do agree with. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will add and maybe ask one more question. I think this goes back to Rose, if you're still available. It's item number, or C seven, it's number seven, it's removal of on-street parking, and I'm kind of thinking that's in conjunction with the C-15, the parking policies with the off-street parking. Am I correct?
I'm taking a look. I think they're, they're somewhat linked.
Okay.
But it didn't really specify.
Okay.
And, and I think that for me, in reviewing this, the specific example I was thinking was when we were looking at striping for bicycle lanes on 246, when we were able to work with Caltrans and their CAPM project to get that included. And some areas, because there's specific widths required, you know, for, for the bike lanes, that need to be wider if you have on-street parking. So we were in discussions with Caltrans and their requirements, and they wanted us to restrict parking in some areas so that they can accommodate the bike lanes, because it start, the 246 started to narrow as you go Easterly. So we, we made a conscious decision in some areas to keep on-street parking and, and try to accommodate bike lanes still in that location. And in some areas where we just couldn't, then it just became, you know, we didn't mark the bike lanes, for example. So that was one area, you know, that I was thinking specifically about. So, you know, it was just something to consider additionally when we're looking at that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm sure my three minutes is up, but I'll just quickly wrap it up. I am in agreement with pretty much everything. That item seven, the remove on-street parking, of course, I guess I'd like to offer a little bit of caution if we remove any more on-street parking, you know, where are we going to park? I'm, agree with Vice Chair Blochdike on the park and ride. I'm thinking we should still consider the park and ride on the, I guess, the north, North Avenue of Flags. Everything else, pretty much agree with. And of course, and I know we talked about this in our last joint meeting, I too am in agreement with the skinny 246, because traffic is, is fast going out of town and coming back into town, and anywhere you're crossing the 246, Sycamore, further up, Valley Dairy, all of those roads, it's kind of dangerous out there. So that, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Good job. Let's see if our council can, I know we've got a little bit of extra time, but wrap up if, if people have questions later, maybe they can come back. Councilman Lewis, do you have any, your C one through C-26 and circulation? Go for it.
Overall, I agree with the recommendations that were put in here. I haven't yet made up my mind how I feel about the park and ride. Part of me feels like, given our current situation and given the fact that I don't, I may be wrong, but I just don't see the park and ride that we already have, like, overwhelmed where people need another one, even during the best of times. But again, I could just be missing the times when it's being used. So I haven't really decided whether I think we should take that out or, or what on that, but I do think that the lighting all through Beulton is a... the lighting all through Buellton is a huge deal, a big deal. I'd like to focus on that as well as the pedestrian paths. There are a lot of younger families with kids in that teen tween age and it's really unsafe for them to walk across town to their friend's house and the more pedestrian access and, and paths that we have that would enable those middle-aged kids and, and, you know, basically everyone, but a lot of the middle-aged kids to get around the city without having to be driven everywhere would be helpful.
That's it. Alrighty, thank you very much. Councilman King.
Um, couple of things. Uh, I, I, I think we're gonna need to take a look at any wreck vehicle was brought up, maybe we should review our ordinance on, and I fought tooth and nail for this, that we don't have wreck vehicles that go from the roof of somebody's house all the way to the street. I mean, I know there's a few people here that want to park their monstrosities in their driveway because they don't want to pay for it. That should have been factored in, in my opinion, when they purchased the, the wreck vehicle that there may be a possibility they have to store it somewhere. Um, I don't have an RV personally, but that was a big bone of contention of mine that basically they're putting up a big blo- uh, block on the traffic lanes, which I'm sure there are some people that, you know, and they don't come in and complain, but, you know, they may um, get irritated because they can't see the traffic coming because RV goes all the way to the street and I, I know I made a, a, an argument for that at one point in time. The uh, so maybe we can take a review of that. Um, the bike lanes, I think that we should be really careful about bike lanes. I know everybody wants to say, you know, we should bike and walk and, you know, hey, we live in California and nobody does that. Uh, this isn't Holland. So I don't think that we should take up our roadways like they tried to do down in Playa del Rey, which made a big disaster because they put a traffic lane right down the middle of one of the ra- main roads that goes out to the four oh five. So, I do want us to take a look at the, Scott, is that a class one or a class two on avenue? Is that a class two?
Class two.
Class two on avenue of flags. You know, it takes up a lot of the roadway and you know, it's really the bike lane to nowhere. Um, I, I, I know that was voted on when I was on hiatus. I would probably argue against that, but maybe we could take a look at that on the number of people that are actually utilizing bicycles on avenue of flags. And trust me, I'm not anti-bicycle, but should we take up an entire traffic lane with a bike lane that nobody uses? You know, that's building a parking lot in the middle of the desert that nobody's gonna use, in my opinion. Uh, so maybe we could take a look at revisiting that class-two bike lane on avenue of flags. Um, I, I guess it's like water under the bridge, but I thought I was very specific when I said that, and the, uh, uh, and, that I wouldn't be in favor of any change to avenue of flag medians if they constrain avenue to one lane and that's actually what we did. Southbound at uh, Heritage, the number two. So we made that a one-lane road and there's nowhere to go with it unless you tear up the brand-new million-dollar-plus median that we put there. So, you know, it's, 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 it's like what they did through solving. You know, they made it one lane in each direction and you can't do anything about it. And we all know that going through there sometimes the traffic is, is abysmal. The, I guess this is to you, Rose. Are we, are we actually in negotiations with the county? To widen McMurray? Is that something we're already in negotiations with them? Um, to say, hey, um, you know, makes a lot of sense for us to widen this road here. Are we, are we actually talking to them now about that?
We have not, um, but um, coincidentally enough, uh, planning does have a meeting um, with county um, coming up quickly that is in discuss, to talk about um, development project just north of the village-specific plan. Um, so th- that will come up in that particular portion. And right now, I mean, roadway width, it, it's not impacted, but it's the bicycle and pedestrian portion if we wanted to have those facilities connect from, you know, the southern portion of McMurray to that northern portion with Hampton Inn. That would help facilitate that.
So, now, is that stretch of dirt between Hampton and Firestone, is that county? I, I, I don't have a map in front of me. Is that, is that the part you're talking about?
It's uh, between, it, it's south of Hampton. No, it's, it's south of the Hampton, where the, it's a little hill.
Okay, south of Hampton. So, yeah, like I thought, between Hampton and Firestone, that's still ours, right?
That's correct.
So, the, you may want to consider, you know, if we do widen, then maybe we could just continue that sidewalk from there up to Firestone, which ultimately goes to, what's that road next to uh, Firestone?
Right.
Thomas, okay. So that, that may be something we want to take a look at is, is maybe us putting sidewalk between there, because I know a lot of people walk between Firestone and Hampton. So, you know, that may be something we, we may want to look into for the future to put a sidewalk from Firestone down to there, so we keep people one out of the dirt. And um, that's, that's also an area where people park in the dirt, so maybe going forward, we can take a look at that. Um, the other thing is, is we kind of touched on the ride share, is I've had some people contact me that there are some people that are parking um, uh, on Shadow Mountain and Bear Creek for that ride share. So maybe we could take a look at that, see why that is, that there, it's, it's becoming an overflow in that neighborhood. I don't know if anybody's contacted you, Scott, about that, or maybe Rose, that people apparently are parking during the day in those residential neighborhoods in lieu of parking in the park and ride. Do you know anything about that, Scott?
No, I do not at this point.
Right, and I haven't received anything recently.
Yeah, I, I got a long letter about that recently, about people parking in those neighborhoods in lieu of parking at the park and ride. Full, ma'am?
You need to wrap it up, sir.
And I'm done. That's all I had. That was my last note. Okay.
Thank you very much. I apologize. Councilman Endrisik. Councilman Endrisik, are you muted?
Yes, you are. All right, is that better?
There you go.
Yes.
Thank you. I don't know who did that, but I, thanks for helping me fix it. The um, the question that uh, came up, we were talking about the, I'm wanting to know, how should one ask to enable sidewalks in Thumbelina? Because this comes up, it goes down, it goes in, goes out. And I think there's a, there, I thought there was quite a bit of support to have sidewalks in Thumbelina over the years when we've talked with the neighborhood there, but I know Art is here and a couple of others, but do you have a question or is there a policy of, of, a path that we could take to, through the citizens to uh, move, move the uh, the meter forward for putting sidewalk, getting sidewalks available in Thumbelina? And once and for all people sign off if they don't want to spend any money. I'm not saying we have to make them have a sidewalk, but there, there've been several people that would like to see sidewalks as they mature and go into wheel-type uh, trans uh, conveyances, bicycles, walkers.
That's a rather complicated issue, as, as you're, as you're indicating here. Um, it, it, it deals with a couple of different factors, one of which is, is gonna be budgetary. That, you know, sidewalks are not an inexpensive proposition. And in order to undertake a project like that, the city would need to uh, look at how it's going to be paid for. It would likely have to be done in phases and um, there would be a considerable amount of upfront planning necessary to, to uh, identify the phases and locations. Uh, the, the second and, and potentially more problematic part of that, as if finding a way to pay for it isn't problematic enough, uh, is, a- as you've mentioned, uh, getting the uh, individual property owners to uh, agree to have that built. Now, the, and, and um, uh, you know, obviously the city could go through a process of eminent domain to do that, that in and of itself can be expensive and time-consuming and rather disruptive, but if there is con- consensus within the neighborhood, um, it's just a matter of getting everyone to buy into the, to the program, but before we can go down that path, essentially this, the, the uh, a, a policy should probably be placed in the circulation element, identifying that as a direction that the city council would like to go. And then staff can start funneling resources toward moving in that direction. Um, sh- short of a formal policy direction that the circulation element uh, i- is, is a prime example of here. We, we, you know, we're kind of spinning our wheels, moving in that direction because there's no guarantee that.
Putting the cart before the horse, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, but so, with a uh, community or a neighborhood um, get-together to, to get the, to, to address it, is there sufficient interest in, from the homeowners doing this, or, you know, the other thing in Thumbelina is a very high percentage of the active Thumbelina owners are very elderly. And they really don't care at this point in their life, whether there's a sidewalk or not now.
So, uh, what I would suggest is, uh, i- it's probably too early for, for that kind of a public polling process. We're, we're probably better off having the city council identify that as a, as a, a policy or a, a program rather, moving forward to investigate the potential of installation of sidewalks. And then we can start moving down that path and that would culminate sometime in the future with those meetings to discuss with the individual property owners there.
Okay.
Their, their willingness to engage in that.
There, there is an avenue to do it. All right.
It starts with this document, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else real quick, Councilman Endrisik, or is that?
No, ma'am. I think this is, this is, I'm, I'm, I'm super impressed with this one-hour meeting that we've had.
Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Uh, just a couple of things, I um, uh, did I hear, Rose, did you say that the park and ride, that was just too, too complicated and have we given up on that more or less at Caltrans?
Um, no, we haven't given up on it. It's been lower on the priority, uh, because each time we have a submittal, it's a ton of new requirements that they want to do and, and put on us um, on, and on this project. So it's requiring quite a bit of engineering time um, and expense for us. Um, so I, I bring that up because it's been on low priority, so I have not had work um, done on that for the past year. Because we've had other higher priorities um, come forward, so I just want to confirm or reconfirm or, or see what we want to do with that project.
All right, thank you. And then um, the McMurray widening, we only have one lane till we get to the part we want to get wider. And then on the other side of that is not much. I, I can't see spending a bunch of money to make that wider, just because it's one lane to one lane. Uh, we just have one little spot for two. Um, the bypass road behind Albertson's, I don't see where that, that's something, somebody drew up one time, but if we add that in, it would either be a requirement of the developer. And it wouldn't be any problem for us, because you can drive out the other side. And um, to participate in the study, that, if everybody's solving and everybody else is studying for the widening of uh, two forty-six uh, east of town, let them do it. I don't think we need to get in on that. They're, you know, they only come to us and then figure that out. I just don't want to spend a bunch of more money to do something. And also the uh, the trees. Um, I get, I'll, we'll worry about that another time. That would be a widening spot and uh, sidewalks. And uh,
What about the turkey buzzards?
Anyway, thank you for a- all your time and, and effort on the meeting and I appreciate all, all of your uh, effort in doing it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice. Okay, I'm gonna run down real quick. Uh, your C one slash two complete streets, love complete streets. Caltrans says that they love complete streets, so why can't we get them to help us with complete streets on two thirty-six? C three congestion, SB CAG, two forty-six. We've got a grant application in now. Rose said we should find out in the next couple of months whether we received a grant to, again, study congestion and mitigating measures on two forty-six. MNS did a uh, study, they did a downsizing to make a skinny two thirty-six in two thousand and six. I was shown the plans, they're very similar to plans that are going on right now. And I I, that is my top priority, two forty-six, is shrinking it down and creating pedestrian safety from the east end of town to Kalor, so that our ranch club, mobile home estate residents can cross the street safely at Kalor as well. Uh, let's see, the level of service, I really appreciated Joel Falter's uh, explanation of SB seven forty-three and what a huge mess that's gonna be for our, to create a metric of vehicle miles traveled per capita. That's, that's just crazy. Um, the bike racks, absolute thumbs up on bike racks. I agree with Aaron Liggett on the RT Buell overpass bike access. We've been looking at that for years. I think the last estimate was a half a million and that was like ten years ago, so I can't even imagine what it would cost now. Wonderful to have it happen, but I can't imagine it happening. Widening on McMurray Road, we are going to need that. We've got, we still have that property where the two hotels were and went out. We've got the townhomes. We've got a senior apartment complex that's coming up on the books. It's the, one lane is just not gonna do it. So I, I'm looking that we're probably gonna need to widen it and even look at perhaps another traffic light. The roadway in connection behind the Albertson Center, you've got a bowling alley going in back there. Think hopefully, think, you know, if, if that ever comes out. And we've got low-income housing, look, being looked at for back there. We are gonna need some kind of uh, other access in and out besides McMurray Road and the parking lot through Steve's Wheel and Tire. Um, so yeah, I think that's something that's gonna have to be studied. Traffic mitigation fees, yes. Um, park and ride on the north end, I think right now perhaps that we should just put it on hold. I'm not saying to delete it or to get rid of it, but I think we have other more important issues to deal with. Um, dedicated RV truck parking, let's see, we talked to P-Soup Andersons and tried to work a deal with them. We've talked to L six and tried to work a deal with them. Do we need it? Absolutely. Where we're gonna find it, it's kind of like our uh, our RT Buell overpass. It'd be wonderful, something we really need to have, but I don't know how we're gonna do it. And um, lighting, we're getting some solar. You know, we pay approximately a quarter of a million dollars for street lighting right now and while it is important and it is a safety feature, um, I really like these solar ideas. And if we can, if we can get lighting and landscaping and all this done in a cost-effective way, terrific. And I think I'm done. I don't know if I did my three minutes, but I will turn it over for, uh, I guess now we go to public comments. Did we get any, Claire?
Uh, we did get one public comment from Larry Bishop. It was part of a larger email that we were going back and forth on, so if it's okay with you, Madam Mayor, I'll read his uh, two comments that were in the email.
Please, please do that.
Okay, so he asks, will the, the updates anticipate the city supporting non- Supporting non agricultural development like sports fields, motels, gas stations. Or annexing property on Santa Rosa Road, south of the river near Granite or Mosby businesses. He's wondering if our document suggests any annexation um, to the south near the granite construction site. And then his other comment had to do with circulation. He says, how about a right hand turn lane? To the southbound one oh one on ramp from two forty six in front of the Sideways Inn. There is a lot of backed up traffic there. Those were his two comments.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Uh, no other public comments?
No other comments.
Okay, then I am closing public comment. We move on to our wrap up. And I guess we start with Irma for process recap and next steps.
Yes. All right, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I will take this very quick. Um. We, we really are gonna finish almost on, a- actually really didn't finish on time. I'm. I'm, I'm totally impressed at the amount of information that we were able to share with everybody tonight. And, and also, and more importantly, that we've received a lot of really good feedback. Um, from both the Planning Commission and the City Council on the directions. Especially the circulation element, which is where we really needed to get some, some direction, so um. I think that this was, we went through a lot in a very short time, so I'm. Just recapping, well, that was the recap. Next steps, so where we are right now, we're finishing phase one of this um. Um, general plan update um, effort. Um. The prior work, the joint study session, we went through existing conditions, um, kind of took a look at what's in the city. Um, today we're going through this baseline report. Further confirming the baseline that we're working with moving forward. Where we went through assessment of what we've accomplished, what we'd like to be accomplishing, we, we, we're getting policy direction. On our, and also on our growth scenarios, so um. You will take all this information and we will move forward to um, phase two. Uh, basically, we will start preparing the um, actually the land use element, um, which is. Staff has been tasked with doing that and the circulation element will be prepared by RingCon. Um. But an other major um, public type of an input process that we're looking at, um, will take place either in March. Hopefully in March, possibly in early April, um, this will be a scoping meeting to um. Address the EIR, the scope of the EIR, and that will begin the secret process that, that will enable RingCon to be preparing the. Um, the program EIR. Um, it will enable um, KOA to be preparing the. Traffic study and to be looking at the various um, growth scenarios that we talked about. If we could just move to the next slide, I've just got um, two visuals here, it's basically. Showing phase one, we're in um, you know, fall, winter, twenty twenty one right now. We're moving in towards the spring and summer where um, we will be working on the EIR, working on the. Land use and circulation elements, which will also can um, include elements of the social equity. Um, we'll be having another scoping meeting, uh, scoping public meeting. Then um, later on in the year, in the fall, uh, we'll be circulating the draft EIR. Um, for public review and comment, along with the land use and circulation element updates. There will be a public review and comment period. Um, we'll be preparing responses to comments and, and doing the final EIR and. Towards the end of the year, we will be going through another series of. Public meetings and, and this time these will be in the form of public hearings, actually. Planning Commission public hearing, the City Commission, City Council public hearing on the EIR. And the general plan update documents. And once those hearings have concluded, um. We will move forward to adoption of the general plan update. Um, hopefully, um, towards the end of, the, end of the twenty twenty one. Probably very early on in um, twenty twenty two. And quick wrap up, um, if there are any comments that anybody still has that they would like to submit. Um, please send those into the Planning Department. Um, the email address is. Planning at cityofbeelton.com. We'd like to receive those by March fifth. And so that we can make those available to our consultants as well, um, as they move forward and start preparing documents. And we will be preparing, um, as we did after the last um. Joint study session between Planning Commission and the City Council, we will again be preparing a summary of the comments that we received. Tonight, um, as well as the public comments that we received and we'll have a summary report available on that. And with that, um, I will turn it to um. Over to Patty, um, Planning Commission Chair, just for some closing comments and then it would go back to um. Holly, the mayor, um, for final closing comments before we adjourn.
Hey, thank you, Irma. Uh, just very quickly, thank you to staff, our consultants, our city manager. For all of their presentations. Um, and thank you to the mayor and everyone else for. Inviting the Planning Commission and or just doing a joint session, uh, even though. It's very long, I think it's a very efficient way to go instead of going from Planning Commission to City Council, back to Planning Commission. So on and so forth. So uh, thanks for the invitation for the joint workshop and thank you to all the presenters. Madam Mayor.
You're on mute, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, thank you Chair Hamel, and I just, I really appreciate that we had a full house tonight. Uh, we had a full planning commissioners here and uh, city council. I appreciate RingCon and KOA. Uh, being part of the presentation along with our staff, which as, as everybody can clearly see are incredibly. Bright, intelligent and well informed. Um, lot of information tonight. Uh, I think if anybody has any other comments, since the three minutes was kind of tough. Uh, to please send them on to the Planning Department. And uh, I really appreciate the information and the fact that we are all able to give our input. Uh, planning commissioners know uh, the land use and, and circulation. Probably better than some of our council, better than I do, and I appreciate all of your input. And um. A very successful evening. So thank you to city staff, city manager, to our other. RingCon and KOA and, and with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you.
Nine nineteen. Good night.
See you next.